Okay, everybody, we're gonna start this meeting for the Town of St. Joseph on November fourteenth, six o'clock for the town board meeting, statement of public notice.
Hereby provided our written notice and the agenda of the public meeting as stated below. There's an opportunity for public comment as noted on the agenda upon recognition by the presiding office.
We'll call all the board members are here, including our engineer and our attorney, and we will take a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose your passes and we will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our upcoming meetings are on the agenda, including our budget hearing next week on November nineteenth at seven o'clock. The board received all their reports on all of our various ones on here. Does anyone have anything to add that they didn't see in the report? All right, public comment. Public comment is for anyone who wishes to speak to something that is not on the agenda. Now you'll have to turn on, thank you Lori. Sure.
We live on Cedar Drive West and thirty-five.
Yep.
And that truck came to them with the guardrail that he railed the whole side. Are they ever going to replace all those guardrails?
Well, we'll get to that when we get Jason up here. We'll ask him what he knows about that. So hold on, go ahead Lori.
Yes, oh, I, I had, Lori Drosier for the record, I had the opportunity that I was looking at chapter one, seven dash twenty-six, which I was, which I accessed through Ecode online. And I have a particular question which I realize cannot respond to tonight, nor do I expect it to, but I would expect that someone could respond to me via my email or else put it as an agenda item. And what I am questioning is in there is stating that the setback from the side and back property lines is ten foot in that particular spot of the pole. And so I'm just asking for you to check on it, follow up, and please advise me on all that for change to.
Okay.
I'm gonna say jill.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else for public comment? All right, we're gonna go on first with you inviting, and I have the worst time with your last name, Jason. Jason Kretchik, does I say that right? I'm not. I know I'm not. Geez it. See, I'm close, but not. So Jason is our community development director here at St. Croix County. And I know you can't answer anything on Highway thirty-five and the guardrails, but maybe you want to pass that on to your fire department or highway department?
I will let our highway department know. So anything that's on the state highway system like that, um, our highway department does the maintenance and the upkeep and that, and then they build the state. Um, and so it would be our highway department that would be including the guardrail.
Sure.
So they were working on it, and one day when they were working on it, they were welding, and they started one of the poles up there. So that's why our. The workers laughed when I told. Oh, that might be why.
There's chairs back there too, if you need a chair right behind you. Thank you. Okay, Jason, you're up.
So the county's got limited control or replacing the whole thing in that because they need approval from the state to approve the funding. And the state has been cutting backs with the funding too, you know, and some areas like Molling and stuff. So anyway, so yeah. Limited on what we can do.
So Jason's here to talk to us a couple, about a couple of things. First off is Eckard Blufflands. And he has a different map than what we have behind me. So you go ahead and start with that and yes, pull that off, please.
All right. Um, so I was here already in twenty twenty-four, uh, just kind of running a rough proposal over uh, the new Eckard Blufflands park property in that for the town board. Um, and through many, many meetings, um, and, and then through committee of the halls at the county level. Um, it was talked about at great length. And, um, it was actually just here in September that the county board moved forward with a phase one of it, and that was confirmed last Wednesday night for the funding because they approved their budget for twenty twenty-five. And so this first phase, and that is one point five million. And the goal of this first phase, when we were originally here before, we were talking about that original master plan. And the old Highway thirty-five north access was gonna be vacated. And then that was gonna come in, and then we had an ambulance building. There was seventeen camper cabins included in that original master plan, uh, plus seven yurts. Uh, so twenty-four, uh, cabins or housing units. And then there was, you know, much more intensity with the ropes cores and sliding hill and stargazing mounds. And then many different campsites on that north end, those are like walk-in campsites. And so when we look at the reality right there where she pointed in that, um, that area has a lot of terrain and it's got a lot of physical property limitations. And we have to comply with the board St. Croix regulations underneath NR one eighteen. And so, uh, there's very, uh, there's some significant challenges to doing any development in that part of the park. And when the county purchased the Eckard Blufflands property here, that's just shy of four million dollars in that was spent on a hundred and seventy acres. And that money was bridge funds and that from the Highway thirty-six, sixty-four bridge, that was where the bulk of it came from. There was also some that was through a Knowles Nelson stewardship grant through the DNR. And that's why hunting is allowed within the park boundaries here. And so most of it was either bridge funds or that grant dollars to purchase the park. Um, that being said, the original cost estimate back in twenty twenty-two, when that came out was about fourteen point seven to sixteen point five million and that for the county. And that amount of development, they wanted to dial it back into more of what those bridge funds were supposed to be used for, which was passive recreational uses or just natural land and that leaving it open space. And so this new concept, and that is kind of almost a couple of phases. But the first phase ideally, and that would be to take and improve the south access here. The north access just has a lot of terrain. Uh, there's about fifteen to twenty feet of elevation change needed here. And then there's not any stacking area for cars before the entrance building. That's why the entrance building on that plan was in quite a ways was in case there was a traffic backup that they wouldn't be backing up on Highway thirty-five. This way here and that any backup with that would be on old Highway thirty-five. However, in that when you reduce the overall scope and intensity of the development and that we see that this will not have nearly more traffic volume than that as the original master plan. However, um, we want to be good neighbors of the area. And so we want to make sure, um, and then if possible, that we can take and get this self-access to old, to old thirty-five to new thirty-five. Um, to kind of square it up a little bit more if possible. And so it's safer, and then it would come up potentially cul-de-sac, that I've had a few conversations in that with the chair here. And then potentially having a private driveway, uh, coming up here to serve the northern, uh, property between the two Highway thirty-fives and then potentially a portion of old thirty-five and that could be vacated. Now, this is all able to change and that and be modified. Um, when this was originally printed, that entrance station may or may not happen. I mean, I guess that it probably will not happen when you go out there, there's kind of a hole in that location. It's probably just gonna be a gated system, um, be much more, uh, simple. Then coming in here, the playground, we originally placed it on the west side of a proposed parking lot. Uh, what we currently marked off or stayed off was a hundred and thirty by two hundred and thirty feet there. And when we were there, that playground really looks like it could be better suited on the east side of the parking lot. What you see here in the blue trail, uh, this was kind of an already cleared area. And so there, um, besides the downfalls and stuff that have happened over the last, uh, ten years or so. Um, and so this was originally the white trail approximately on that original master plan. And that was originally intended to be an ADA accessible trail. And so as phase one, and that this will be set up, like it could be paved in the future to be ADA. Uh, however, at this point, we don't have any intention of making it ADA, uh, that it would be just an eight to ten foot wide gravel path. And that basically whatever the gravel spills out behind the truck, that's gonna be the width of the trail. This sports area here, um, and that really that's not like a baseball field or a football field. Uh, we're thinking of it more passive sports. It's just a really nice flat area that's already open. And, uh, it can be used for some kind of a purpose and that without having to take and remove a lot of trees. One of our priorities, um, of course, is to be good neighbors in that to the property owners that are back along the St. Croix. And so, um, back in September, when we found out that, uh, it was very likely that the funding would be approved for this first phase of the park. Uh, we took and installed seventy-two four to five foot, uh, conifer trees along this boundary. Uh, and they don't actually wrap up around here because this is a very heavy tree cover and that from the existing. Uh, but we planted two rows down through here and standard dome to help create that privacy screen for the neighbors. Like I mentioned before, and that the property doesn't, uh, come without challenges in that. And one of the problems in that, that, uh, people that live within the park had before was going through that existing entrance station every time that they wanted to access their property or their friends came to access their property and the deliveries. And so that was another big reason in that they pivot from that north access going through the entrance station down to the south access besides the terrain. Um, and then because there was a natural break in the road right here and the road cuts to the left and then park traffic would automatically be diverted to the right. And by doing that, um, the people within the park boundaries will have unrestricted access to their properties, their friends', um, deliveries, that kind of stuff. Um, and then we would have it just clearly signed, now park traffic must be after the north. Now, question is, is, you know, are people, park users, gonna wanna drive down the road here, the private road? And so we would take, we would make sure that we don't have any parking areas along the, the road here so that people would be inclined to automatically drive down there. Where there is a temporary parking spot kind of right here, just in the grassy field right now. So with that, um, it is approved as far as timing and moving forward. We've got park staff out there right now, kind of clearing some trails in that with all the downed trees and stuff. Trying to open it up and that to be able to get trucks in with, uh, gravel. And we've got a parking lot area kind of mold, so you can see that out there. And I think highway, depending on what kind of, uh, litter we have, could potentially move in here sooner than later. Or, um, and that they could take and be maybe early spring. Um, we will have to comply with DNR stormwater permits because we'll be disturbing more than an acre. Um, and that for the parking lot and the road, so. With that, I can turn it over to any questions from the board?
So I, in your packet tonight is the email that Jason and I went back and forth on because originally when this board saw this, this is what you saw, which has this north cul-de-sac for that person that lives there. Now they're moving it down to here, which makes that person's driveway seven hundred feet long. Have you had a conversation with them as to whether they will accept that or not?
I have not talked with them in that, so I'm thinking that you brought that up. And so there was a whole master planning process in that for this park. And so John Hoovers, our county planner, is already going through and removing a lot of stuff from that draft camper cabins, for example, the walk-in campsites, uh, the sliding hill. So we're reusing that overall scope. And that in the next week here, and that I will be sending out a notice to each property owner in that within three hundred feet of the full park boundaries, invite them to an open house and that probably just before the holidays and that at Christmas time, uh, to give them a bonus notice. And that because we want to catch them in case there's any, uh, snowbirds or any minutes heading out south, um, and that, and try to get their input. Um, and I mean, if this is extended up, some of my concerns would be is if we extend it up to the middle of nowhere and that, that is a spot and that for trash dumping and kids partying, creating some, uh, problems. And that, but that can be worked out.
The other thing is, is that the town board would then have to agree to, um, um, discontinue old Highway thirty-five from.
Yeah, from there.
Well, you wouldn't have to.
Oh.
And that, but, and that if, I mean, it, it might make sense in that to take and keep one safe access onto that part of Highway thirty-five because of the issue that had been out there. And that versus taking and keeping a bad access.
Well, the DOT would like us to get rid of that. They've said that to us in the past when this property was coming out in with a subdivision years ago. Their big thing was get rid of that north access because of its danger as it approaches on a thirty-five. You're coming up a hill and you're at a very sharp angle. So it's very difficult. Would you go back there and check and see if they're looking for agendas? Um, so I think that's the big thing is that if we're gonna do this and if this is what we agree to do and if you get the agreement of that landowner for that, that we need to discontinue that roadway and not have that access there because it's a dangerous access.
Yeah, we agree in that. And so stuff like that, we want to help the town with and that. We want to take and try to, um, you know, make this development, like I said, the intensity. Um, if you were figuring how many housing units in that would be roughly about two hundred and forty car trips per day if this whole area was to be plotted out. Um, and what we're suspecting now is that it's gonna be significantly less than that because the original master plan was only about two hundred cars per day. And that, now those are all projections, you can only take them for what they're worth. And that, but, uh, we just got a couple of passive hiking trails over here. Um, that access down to the St. Croix here, along, yeah, we got twenty-eight hundred feet of frontage as a colony on the St. Croix. Uh, but it is very difficult to access and unless you're a relatively in shape person, you're not gonna be going down the beach here. Uh, and the county, I don't see any, uh, possibilities in the future that we would have a power lift or a gate attendant running a lift up and down and that just, uh, complication and liability for that are pretty significant. And so will I ever say that there's not gonna be a set of stairs to go down to the water? No. And then, um, in fact, that would probably won't be one of the things in the following phases. Um, but again, you got, you know, seventy-five to a hundred feet above and then you gotta come down and that, and that's at the best point along this whole half mile.
So I guess I would prefer to wait to make a decision on this cul-de-sac until you've get an approval from that landowner. Cause that seven hundred foot driveway is a lot to deal with.
My driveway is almost nineteen hundred people.
Well.
So it all depends on the equipment that you have and what they want.
And what they want, right.
And that, and so that would be how I would suggest. And that the county again wants to be a good neighbor. We want to develop this right. I'm not trying to cut corners. Um, and so that's where, um, we're willing to work and that is where that is.
So then the cul-de-sac would have to be built to our standards, which are different than county's highway. Just so you know. And then I'll leave it up to the, and I know the town of Hudson has spoke to you also about paving old thirty-five and bringing it up to standards.
Yes, and that's our intention and that would be to bring this up to common road specs and that all the way in. And that we would end up widening the existing private road going in through the corner and then we would take and build it back into the park. And so that would be the part that we would be improving, widening, um, paving and that the works. That is the.
I'm gonna.
An actual intersection and road improvement here is where most of that money is gonna go.
Yeah.
Um, and that there's not a bulk of money going in and that to the trail. Um, in all clarity, I'm just trying to be very upfront. And that just in the general concept in the county's capital improvement plan or the KIP. And that we do have it as a phase development with one million per year. However, that's, that is able to change and that is subject every year the board has to allocate that funding. And so that is for the next four years after twenty twenty-five. So.
So would you mind just turning that around so people in the audience can see it? And I'm gonna turn it over to the board. Who has any questions on this?
I honestly don't think that we could possibly spend that much money with that new master plan. I don't think we're gonna have that need, especially if we, uh, use the grant options that are out there. I think that is, um, gonna be. So.
Go ahead.
So, uh, it's kind of a dual relationship with Hudson. What has Hudson said about the residents at the lower end? Have you talked to Hudson? The Hudson residents of that.
The ones that live here on the river?
Yeah. No, 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 up by the highway there.
Yeah.
Have you spoke to them people?
No, those would be notified at our open house and that that we have about a month from now.
All right.
And that I was at the town of Hudson's May, uh, board meeting and they, or I shouldn't say that they made a motion to support improving that self-access of old thirty-five and using that as a park entrance. And, uh, I'm going back there on December third, which is their next board meeting. And then I'm giving them an update and that with the same, uh, plan and maps. Uh, our county highway engineer is gonna be creating that design work for the intersection. Um, and that is, um, that may be in the hands of the DOT as far as how long that approval process takes, you know, so.
And then, and then, uh, I guess it'd be educational or slash concern. So that's, that's a big piece of real estate along the river that people are gonna wanna try and access down to the water on their own. How, how are we gonna?
Are you gonna deal with emergency management?
Yeah.
Is that where you're going?
Well, that, or do you see the opportunity to bring it up to ADA slopes all the way down to the water? Or how's the county, or is the county just say no access?
Uh, it's gonna take some time because I mean, it's one thing when you're going down to that, but then when you turn around and come back up, I mean, you're probably looking at a hundred and seventy to two hundred steps to come up.
I'm well versed on, I just mean the public.
So on that original master plan, so when our committee said we'd like to develop trails out there, that north part that shows that, uh, I'll call it switchback trail going down by the water there, I'm like, wow, it looks like that might be the easiest. That's literally running down to the bottom of the beam.
Yeah.
Well, you don't wanna build your boardwalk or your, uh, trail on the bottom where all the water comes. And that, and much more than that, the zoning regulations of St. Croix won't allow us to build green on soil preservation zones. And so unfortunately, a lot of the stuff that's in that master plan, um, doesn't comply with the St. Croix zoning regulations.
Yeah.
And it doesn't comply in that with a lot of like the town ordinances and stuff. And, uh, so that's the reason in that to reboot and, uh, figure out what's gonna be to work with the property. Again, that the county people and that have a lot at stake in that. Or they got a nice property and it'd be nice to be able to just have them walk around. I believe that's the, uh, committee's words and the county board's words, it's not my words. And so that's where they were connected, the very small fates here.
Anyone else?
I have a, I just have a question, and this is not my area of expertise, so I'd like to lean on Zach, who is the exact opposite side of me right now. But one of the concerns I have is when someone actually does have an accident or is stuck or, you know, we've had the discussion with the Willa River State Park a few times now. But with access trying to get in and out of there, is there gonna be any concern with the way that this layout's changed? Or have we talked to emergency management slash emergency planning for ingress and egress for the town to get in? Or is it still water ambulance service to get in and out, stuff like that?
So it'd be nice. As far as what our access is, we need a, we need a big enough for a ranger. Yeah. You know, as part of a dump. Yeah. When the loop trail was built and that your guys' UTV was purchased with loop trail funds. And, uh, and so, uh, but what I'm saying is that we're gonna be able to drive a dump truck and that along this blue trail, you're gonna drive over that. So for this first phase and that, uh, it should be all ambulance accessible, we can do that with that really. Um, and that, now that being said, and that is there gonna be some more remote trails and that that might be harder. Um, we're definitely designing with emergency management going forward as far as up here. And that it is a big concern and that, and we still have to address for down by the water and that because um, it's very hard to get to and in that you're not gonna be able to cargo a ten foot wide path to get down there. And then even for, uh, UTV, so.
Yeah, my other concern is that. Yeah, my other concern is that people are not exactly always the most articulate in describing where they are. When something happens and so. If there's something where a marker can be placed on some of these more remote trails so that everyone can understand where when they call nine one one. We know where they are in in a relative way. I'm not saying that we have to. Put GPS on every inch of it, but just something where. And if we can work with Zach or we can work with the emergency management at county too, I think that would be incredibly important based on how this design has changed.
Go ahead. Now, now I, just a minute, just a minute. Yeah, you can come over and take a picture, but I'm gonna let Zach speak.
Yeah, I'll answer that. If we we discussed this with Will, um, we actually used two different. Um, applications or apps that are on the phone. Um, one can be sent to the patient or the individual. And they can respond back with what the three words are that that are sent to them. Um, and that tells their location within the ten to ten area. Uh, which is super effective at Will. Um, I just have to build a tech with cell phones over there. Um, but at Will, it works great and we got a secondary one that we use that that to fetch automatically gives us. Right away.
As long as it. As long as it works and that people can be found, that's my concern. One of the things I liked about the old plan, other than it seemed like it would. Perhaps make money instead of being sometimes a park that loses money. It's just fine. That's the way it goes. Um, is that this offers a little bit more of a remote-esque. And sometimes technology does not work well in remote-esque scenarios, so.
You know, um, just to answer that point, um, and the county doing other trail work. And that it's a very good point, you know, that if you go up north, you're riding an APV trail, snowmobile trail. Tuscobia, for example, or the Gandy Dancer, they have markers along there so that people can um do it and so. Um, that is a valid concern and we can definitely put uh some kind of trail markers and that out there so that it makes sense. And that and now with NG ninety one one, we can actually import that data on those trails as a PDF. And that so that when there is a call and that they can respond to the responders and say. Yeah, it's on Norrisell Stress just north of the parking one a couple hundred feet, you know, and that so that's where it'll be good, so. Hey, I'm not sure what that numbering really wants like right now. I'll be happy to work with you um and that, but that is something that I could do above and beyond.
Thank you.
I would also like to see signage that tells people not to leave those trails. Because my fear that I hear here too is that they're gonna try to access that river. From your trail you're putting in there, which is a long ways from the river and they get out in that rough area or down in that canyon. And how are they gonna, how is anyone gonna get to them? So are you gonna put signage up that says no access or something that keeps them out of there? I don't know. I don't know that you can even do that with an Old Nelson, so that'll be another thing you'll have to look at.
Yeah, I know, but I think you can put um signage in that, please keep on trail, you know, and that I think that would be fine. We can't prohibit people from. Hunting and walking through a park off the trails and that a trail you can just quickly stay on a trail.
The other, the other piece to you saying that is. Is I believe it's just, is it just south of this is the private beach? Do I have that right?
Right here. This.
Yeah, so. Yes, but I'm just worried that in August.
Right.
Someone's gonna bring a boat up onto that and cause a different level of problems.
Right.
So those.
So those aren't clearly marked right now as far as the park, the park boundaries versus uh the private areas?
Oh, I'm not worried about people going out of the private areas from the. From the park necessarily, that's a different concern. I'm talking about someone coming in on the boat, launching from Hudson. Or Stillwater and then going, I'm gonna go stop off at the park and and you know. Grill out for an hour or something and it caused a different level of issue. So those are the pieces I always worry about because that's also where you get things like the litter and the. You know, beer cans, beer bottles floating down and all that stuff, so. Those are all pieces I just. Hope we work through with emergency management to have a plan in play.
They'd be able to do that now, but if they're not, our parks department is actually considering a boat and that they can deal with the litter and the trash and that and the flood debris and that that is up on that beach. Um, and that if this is moving forward and that, but again, we're not gonna be encouraging uh any kind of access at this point, so.
Anyone else at the board want to say anything? Is there anyone here in the audience that lives in one of these parcels that I showed you on here? Yes, sir. Come on over. Um, there's a microphone on the table there if you want to grab it. Go ahead.
It's uh two, three, three River Heights Trail, so I am.
So you're in here?
Yep.
Okay.
And for the south coast there, but I'm actually the next one. Yep, so that's my my current home. Um. It's two, three, three River Heights Trail. Um, I will say from a homeowner's perspective, we're much happier with this plan than Disneyland that was uh. Orster on us a few years ago, so um hats off to the county for. Going back to what the original intent was of these funds to preserve the river valley and not exploit, which is what I think that plan was there. Um, but I'm actually the next agenda. I don't know, it's just if you had any questions or comments, he is. He has done everything he said he uh has done so far. They planted the trees a few weeks ago. They've cut the grass, they've been out there uh for the for the past couple of weeks and since Jason's been involved, um. It's been much more transparent what's going on out there now, so.
Okay.
To your concern, Mr. Bruce, um. The beaches are heavily used during summer. Um, we constantly have. Trash and debris at our house down there, um. From people on the river every weekend and whatnot, so it is marked. They have. Like three foot uh by two to three inch wide park boundary. Signs down there. We all have our private property marked as well, but a lot of times those signs get ripped down. Um, throughout the course of the summer, so. That's my comment on that.
Part of my concern.
I'll wait for the next point.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Otherwise, Jason will, if you have anything else to say, you can say it. Otherwise, we're gonna move on to the next thing, so don't put the mic down. Cause you're up to the next thing.
Extend the invite um as we get uh, you know, far and down the master planning process. Uh, we're looking at hopefully having a draft of that completed by the January community development committee meeting. Um, and potentially you know, February or March adoption of that master plan and process, so. Uh, maybe at that point would be a time in that that would come back to the town board.
Yep.
And uh at that time then too, I could probably have uh some preliminary plans on the access to highway thirty five. And what that would be uh considered and then I would also have input from that property owner on the cul-de-sac and where that would be located.
Cause the board has to go through a process for the discontinuance. So it's not a thirty day process. It takes longer than that and our attorney will have to be involved in that, so I want to know. Once we approve that, that starts that ball rolling, so probably January, February, you want, if you're going, you're going to the. Town Hudson in December, do you want to come back in January or February? What are you thinking? Or you wanna let me know? Okay, sounds good.
Let's see what Hudson has to say and let's see how things progress and let's see how it will be most of those.
Please extend uh invitation to the clerk's office so we know. Alright, the next thing on the agenda is bike trail connections and town property. So this is on here because um.
So I, yeah.
It's over here.
Yeah, so I just like to say and yes, so. That is phase two, so as you have all seen in that that phase one of what we call the highway thirty five biking pet trail. Uh, is completed now and yep, so it will take off from the south access point of old thirty five, go all the way up to County Road V. Uh, going over to V, then it'll be an on-road trail over to Trout Brook Road, which would then connect it. To Willa River State Park and then there. Um, the reason for this agenda item and that is the county could potentially build that off a highway trail within. The right of way of thirty five and County Road V. However, the town of St. Joseph has a area that was designated for biking pedestrian purposes. On the plat of Valley Estates and that is shown by the teal uh lines here on the map that I provided. And when we are going through our design process, our county highway department engineers will be doing the design work on this phase two. Uh, we would like to know if the town is on board and that with us using that land as well if needed. Um, and that for the trail or if it's an absolute no. Um, if we are gonna use that or if the town board is okay with it. I guess I'd like to take and just get a consensus now and then we would come back and that with a formal. Um, approval and that for that area because we would need that for our tap grant fund, which is the transportation alternatives grant. So.
So I just want to make a note. Is that the town board. Got this, this part here on River Road. With mitigation funds, but then this part came with the development.
Okay.
So it's kind of two pieces.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so.
So you're, so you're right on this map of what we actually have title to.
Currently have, you know, and so the goal and that and why we would keep it on the east side of highway thirty five is as you've seen with phase one. And that there is a crossing at old thirty five, but if we keep the highway thirty five biking pet trail going on the east side. And that that would reduce in the amount of people that need to cross highway thirty five. It'd be only basically the people that live within at Kirk Park. Or if they're going to the park for their attraction, which is probably gonna be much smaller. Among people than if they were just crossing because that's where the trail cut over to the west side. So it is our intent to hopefully keep it on the east side because of those uh crossings and reducing the number of crosses that people have to do.
So you would need some sort of an agreement from the town and that's where our attorney comes in.
I think I need a resolution from the town, you know, authorizing the use of uh that strip of land for. The biking pet purposes because those tap grant funds are supposed to be within the right of way of the state on that or the county. And so and that that would be just to make sure that we got that formal agreement. We would get that agreement for you. You would not have to have that drafted. Um, of course, we would provide it in ample time for your attorney or and that to be able to review it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who's responsible for the maintenance on that trail? Okay.
Teresa, do you know if we own that? Part of the property outright or if we, if it's an easement or?
I'd have to look on the plat. I know we own this outright, which is your second paper there.
Which is the?
This is the, this is what.
That's the River Road.
That's the River Road piece that we own outright with mitigation funds. I would have to look at this plat again. Which we can dig that out.
Yeah, and I only ask because if we own it, then we just grant the county an easement. On that, on that piece of it.
I I'm pretty positive that that first chunk that she mentioned and that was dedicated as part of the planning process, just like any road would be. And that and then I think the other part was acquiring be entitled with the bridge mitigation funds and that, so it is all.
Okay.
In be entitled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yes, and that that would be another route that would be more than ample for our cap.
So what is your timing on getting that resolution, et cetera?
Well, again, just like a consensus now um and that, but. As far as phase two here, our highway department, like I said, is gonna be designing that. Uh, we would hope to get it designed and get it out to bid um in late twenty twenty five if possible. Um, so I would guess in that that early next spring I could have an easement in that drafted potentially um and that you're pushing town with.
Why am I keep muting? I. I would like to have a little bit of a discussion about the on-trail part on River Road and the access at Trout Brook. Because the board has been very vocal and has done by motion that they do not want Trout Brook Road used as a bike trail. That you would go through that intersection and then enter the park.
Correct.
You would not go down Trout Brook and then enter the park, so that's number one, that we did send that motion to the state park and to St. Croix County regarding that.
No, I believe the intent right now is that is to go directly in the northwest corner of Willa River State Park, so that we do not jogging down. The Trout Brook Road at all.
Okay.
And that so and if that didn't work with Willa River State Park, you know, we have to get into their property and then drop in on their property down through some other trail that might connect.
So then what do you want to do with the rest of River Road? What's your intent on that?
Uh, the current intent on that was just um and that an on-road painted bike lane.
On both sides or one side?
Just one side.
So are you gonna increase the asphalt top of that road or how are you doing that? Cause right now it's a thirty five foot top with lines. So are you expecting that you're gonna repaint that road and move it over to get your lane on one side? What's that, what's that gonna look like?
I believe that was the original intent. I'm not sure that that'll be how it'll be designed now. I'm not in that um that familiar with all the different speeds and the highways and traffic, you know, and that, so I mean. And then again, I could provide follow-up and that down the road on that. Um, you know, and we're open to trying to work with it, so.
Anyone on the board have any questions on that?
I guess we'll.
Turn yours on, please. I'm I'm as bad as you are tonight.
So your second phase is from where you left off currently to the corner of. River Road and thirty five, right?
Uh, actually, the River Road and Trout Brook would be phase two, however, at thirty five would be County Road V and thirty five.
So some of the folks here today wanna learn. What is your thought process going north down thirty five? As you stated on the east side of the road, what's, what's that conversation look like?
So we applied for a carbon reduction grant uh about three months ago or probably even longer than that ago. Uh, we're supposed to find out here in September, but we haven't heard back on that grant yet. Uh, but that was for a partial uh a moment or a partial segment of that initial phase three, which would be from County Road V and. Thirty five up to Big Guy's Barbecue.
Yeah.
And uh so with these cap grants, they want us to start and stop at home. And so that would be a partial phase three if you were to get that. Um, that's a pretty expensive trail to build and that as well. And then from Big Guy's Barbecue, we'd be looking at continuing up the east side of the road. However, then now we look at the highway thirty five bridge crossing highway sixty four. That's a pretty nice wide bridge, but it's only a two-lane road going across sixty four and there's a ten-foot paved shoulder on the bridge. However, that traffic is doing fifty-five miles an hour and so because of it being at that rate of salient. In order to put a bike trail on that bridge, we need to have a bower in between and that to keep everything separate. And it's literally that bower width that we would be short. And that to go across on that bridge besides building a fence and that to prevent people from throwing stuff down on the cars on highway. Sixty four and below. And so that's where um now we've kind of rethought that process. And maybe we go over and connect to County Road E on the south side of sixty four. And that because County Road E already has the bridge wide enough and it's got the fence and everything and it's got the trails already there by their own boat. And so that might be the more logical uh approach to it and that versus expanding the bridge uh for highway thirty five going over sixty four. And that'd be probably between one point two and one point five million by the time we hit the building that.
So the residents that are along thirty five can. Are we safe to say that this? Trail may look like what you started down in North Hudson along there?
Yes, and that so that would be very similar. It's a ten-foot wide uh paved trail. Um, and that within the right of way of highway thirty five for the most part, or if we get up by sixty four eventually within the right of way of sixty four. Wherever we don't have an easement, so.
Is, is there ever conversations with landowners that are? Uh, concerned with their privacy of where you would take on installing a. A fence of their choice or things like that? You know, there's some homes along there that are sitting right on the edge.
I think most of those are on the west side though, right?
No.
No.
Okay.
Red pine. Red pine would have.
Are you coming out to the west side? Are you coming out to the west side?
I want you to come up to the microphone because it doesn't show up on our recording if you don't. So if you wanna grab up with the grab the right microphone, I'd appreciate it and just introduce who you are.
So we and that you use and that several open houses as part of this process and that and we talk with the property owners along there, so.
Turn the mic on.
Along each segment, not the whole thing on that along each segment as well, we talk to the property.
I'm Joel Nagus. I'm on Thirty Five B. I got four on four to be fronted on the St. Croix there. Uh, but I got here a little bit late, but uh uh are you coming out of North Hudson on the west side of Thirty Five?
No.
We're we're on the.
He's on the east.
East side. You're on coming out of the east.
Yeah, and that's if you know where the existing new trail that we just finished up here in the last month or month and a half.
We're sitting right on that.
Yep, so I'm gonna walk over here. Uh, but so here is where the phase one trail left off. That's the south access of Old Thirty Five. And then we'll stay on the east side and that's sorry, I realize that the the trail shows it right down the middle of the road. And then we'll go along the east side here all the way up. And then what we're looking at doing is potentially getting an easement or permission to use. The town of St. Joe's land here and that to help give us a little bit more room around County Road V especially. Just with the terrain there and making it ADA.
Okay, and then mostly for my neighbors here, I should probably have him here, but going forward towards Big Guys, you you wanna stay on the east side?
East side, yeah. We we wanna limit the number of crossings across Thirty Five just for safety purposes. And so um that's one of the things at the current south end of Old Thirty Five that access, you'll see that there's no crosswalk. On Thirty Five there because that's fifty-five mile an hour traffic. The DOT will not approve a crosswalk and that at that rate of speed because in Wisconsin, the state law said that you have to stop for people within a crosswalk. And uh so that is a big concern, fifty-five miles an hour down to nothing, you know, so.
You answered my question. I was just starting on what's.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So as you're designing these trails, and I'm gonna bring this up because um I work in the town of Hudson and there's a town of Hudson resident. Who has an incredible, who's on the north end of that trail right before Edgemont Estates that you've installed. And that driveway that he has is not manageable at all. I mean, if you had a Corvette, there's no way you could go up over that driveway and get into his parcel. So I'm concerned that if you're designing this, are you gonna make access available? To all these residents that are along this trail that maintains what they have and gives them the same access they had before you put the trail in.
But that driveway before we went in, it was like.
I know, but now it goes like this and then it levels to the trail and then it goes out. You can't get over that hump.
Put a flat spot in there, will fourteen feet wide. It is the issue that and so we're still. Going through some options and that with that property owner. He was in my office on Friday afternoon and so I am looking at where our options are, so.
Cause I'm.
Situation because you wouldn't have got a Corvette up in it before.
Well, I know, but you couldn't if you really wanted, but now you gotta go over the hump. So now you can't get it over the hump.
You can't right now.
But what I'm saying is that I'm concerned for I'm concerned for landowners that are being being um affected by this trail. That are not being cut off from their access because your trail is at an elevation that doesn't meet their access. So I am concerned about that. Cause when I saw that thing but put in, I was like, oh no, this does not work.
And is there something that I need to address?
So. Um, for the board, we probably need to make a motion tonight that we're going to work with the county on this land that we have titled to. On V and. On Thirty Five V and River Road. I guess those are the three that we have. And then I think you're gonna have to come back with some other proposals regarding River Road and that access at Trout Brook. Cause I'm not comfortable giving you carte blanche on River Road until you show us some plans. How does everyone feel on the board?
Agreed. Yeah, I wanna see some more plans after that.
Yeah.
I I've been notorious for coining River Road as town of St. Joe's Dragway.
Yeah.
Um, it. That is a road I would not trust painted lines on. So I I've been very vocal. I think that's not the best plan. I understand this is. The plan of many more people than than me, but. I would be. Very curious to see an alternative.
Is there anyone in the room that is affected by this plan that's on the wall here? You are. Okay, would you grab a microphone, please, and tell us who you are? See, I give everybody an opportunity sooner or later, right?
I believe it's.
I'm the answer to me.
Okay.
I own the corner of V and Thirty Five. North, north side.
Oh, you're on the north side. I was just gonna say the south side is a development. I didn't think that was yours.
And that trailer, it's gonna be out and be right from my house. I don't want the trailer, trailer. Perfect. If it's gonna cross, if it's coming out on the east side, why is it not staying on the side? It's crossing B.
No, it's staying on the west.
No, it's staying on the east.
I'm sorry, stay in the east. You're right. I'm sorry. It's on the east.
The old Thirty Five is gonna cross there again?
No, no, it's gonna, they're gonna continue it.
So here and then we're gonna continue and that that master's plan is a little bit confusing too because it shows. And that that bike trail coming out on the north and and still having the crossing on the south end. Instead of having two accesses going across Thirty Five, we're gonna keep it on the east side of Thirty Five all the way up. All the way down and that over to Will River and then we're gonna keep it from here. We're gonna go straight up on the east side.
Okay, but right now there's that crosswalk that goes down the old Thirty Five.
Yes.
That's gonna cross there, right?
They only to the park.
Just to the park and then you have to back up there.
Right, because we're gonna discontinue the north end of that road.
Well, I've got about fifty-foot dip. Culver that goes through there. What are they gonna do with that? Build a thing, keep follow the dip with the culver.
I don't know a lot more when it's gonna get designed, but when we're going through there.
I don't fight this.
And then and with the.
I don't want that one crap.
And well, it won't be on your property. It'll be in the right of way of Highway Thirty Five.
I planted thirty years ago about a hundred pines.
So if the trees were planted in that on the right way, the state can come through and remove those at any time in the.
They're gonna pull a hundred pine trees. That's stupid, man.
And that, no, and then we don't remove any extra trees in that in the east and that. I haven't looked at where the trees are located and that, but the trees shouldn't have been planted on the right way. And that and so and that, but if there's terrain, you'll see and that like on the first phase and that where we had steep hills and that to deal with. We had to suck the road and then run a bike path closer to the road and provide a curve and guard. And then because of that traffic doing fifty-five miles an hour there and that there's a five-foot setback and that from the face of the curb. And that to the edge of the bike path and that to pour.
So from the center of the road, where is these? A lot like that, it's like measure of something.
It all varies amongst the highways. I would, I mean, if you want, you can do a call and you can take and call me. Uh, tomorrow or Monday and I can give you the exact width, but. Of where it is on your property, but yeah, I can't even guess, especially with your.
You're on the, you're on the north side of of V. And you're off of Appaloosa? Is that what you're off of? Okay. So this bike trail is on. Is on the south. I don't know how wide the right of way is on V. V varies anywhere from sixty-six to a hundred feet wide. Well, but it's relatively flat coming from Thirty Five.
Uh, bro, once you cross V, it's all.
But they're not crossing V. They're gonna stay on the south side of it.
Or phase two will be on the south side. It would be a phase.
Phase three. Phase three just keeps going on the east side of Thirty Five.
And we'll, and that where it's dropping off like that, we're gonna suck it up and that and bench it close to the road.
Here's the V D, so.
Yeah, that's on the further north. Yeah. But at V there, where the needle, where the needle development is there on V and.
Significant also.
But the corner of V and Thirty Five is relatively flat because that's the needle development. Because that's at forty acres. Yeah. Okay. Well, he'll get in contact with you. Thank you. Anyone else that's on this map that's affected? Does the board wanna make a?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that the town of St. Joseph moved forward with St. Gray County in a spirit of cooperation for the possible. Access or easement of of town-owned property for the phase two development of the bike trail moving north on Highway Thirty Five. And east on County Road V.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any other discussion regarding that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes?
I could have made a better motion, so.
He is good at that. Um, and then you'll kinda come back and talk to us about. River Road. Cause I really think that's a discussion we need to have sooner than later.
Oh, yeah, good.
Cause once you get on that road, we need to know how that's gonna look.
I wanna have a little when they're having a year.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So.
I'm I I would be measured, so I have actually some maintenance.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Um, the last thing on here is stormwater review. You asked me to put this on here. When he's talking about stormwater review, we have stormwater in this town in pro in developments with developers agreements. We have contracted with our engineer to oversee and inspect those. And in turn, we will send the homeowners a bill and let, in the town of Hudson, they ran anywhere from thirty to forty-five dollars a homeowner to for those inspections. And most of the homeowners asked that it be put on their tax roll as an assessment charge, just like on any other bill. I know county does this for subdivisions and and for municipalities and you wanted me to put this on so you could address the board. Do it.
Thank you. And so the county's land division ordinance, we went through and we invented that. Um, and the old land division ordinance had public improvement standards. When I say that, I'm talking about roads and, you know, you need two inches of black top, three inches of black top, whatever. And so the county doesn't have the authority to regulate those kinds of public improvements. And now stormwater is something that we can regulate, however, and that's been brought to my attention and that at the town. And that has your own people going on doing your reviews and stuff. And so um. At the county, we don't have a problem as long as it's being reviewed. Ultimately, stormwater and the follow-up on stormwater is at the Woke municipality or the town in itself. And so if the town of St. Joe said, yeah, we're okay, you know, on that going forward, we wanna administer this uh fully. I'd have one question is you guys collect financial assurance for the stormwater improvement to be actually installed? And that and if so, and that would you be interested in doing an MOU? Um, and that with the colonies so that you would take care of all the reviews so that we wouldn't have conflicting reports going between the county review and the town review.
Sure. Did you wanna address anything on that? Cause I know they review our subdivisions.
Right, Madam Chair and members of the board, um, those discussions actually go back a lot of years. Uh, with some of the county staff as far as, you know, the county doing the review and us kind of doing a similar, you know. Tandem review, if you wanna call it that. Um, so I think. There were discussions about is that the most efficient way to do it? Um, and should, you know, maybe the town take that over? Um, those discussions were had a couple of years ago. Uh, the last time and I think, you know, I would certainly recommend that the board consider that possibility. Um, again, we've got, right now we have the county reviewing new developments and and the towns engineers reviewing it kind of at the same time. Uh, not necessarily at the same levels, but there's kind of a double check. Um, so. Yeah, I think that's something that that the board can decide whether or not they wanna consider.
We would still have to do a subdivision review, but we would only be checking for weight to width ratios. Uh, and that maybe access to each parcel, that kind of basic stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, then to make sure that surveys are good, that they don't have typos, that kind of stuff through our highway uh department. We used to take and do outside contracted services for our stormwater reviews. We brought that back in-house with our highway department engineer. And so basically we're just reviewing it for, does it work? Is it properly sized? Does it use the right numbers? And uh, so that's kind of what we're doing right now. Um, but yeah, we don't wanna be uh working against the town and that. And so unfortunately, that's what can happen if you got multiple people. Firms reviewing the same plan. And then however, we wanna make sure that the town would then collect the financial assurance or be in charge of actually having it installed. And then we wouldn't be doing the inspections on it or anything. We would be hands off. And so that's something that we are willing to offer and we can get whatever kind of an agreement.
Well, cause I know right now you're doing them on new new subdivisions and we're taking care of the old ones. So they're doing the review on them and then any costs are assessed to the landowner or on their taxes, which we have that ability and I don't know that you do.
We do not.
No, I don't think so. So it kinda makes it a little easier for us. Does anyone on the board wanna change that or should we just continue where we are for the time being and see if we wanna change something in the future? I mean, I'm comfortable where I where we are.
Seems simple for now.
Yeah.
Yeah, to continue.
So thank you so much, Jason, for coming.
Want us to continue collecting the financial assurance and doing the reviews?
On the new developments. Yeah. I think that's the way to go, right?
Well, again, with with that particular uh method, you end up with two letters of credit for each developer. And you have two entities kind of. Working on the same project, so. Um, from the standpoint of efficiency, it would be more efficient for one. One group to be doing that. You know, certainly it has worked, you know, over the years. You know, I don't. Think there's any major complaints, but there have been discussions over the years about consolidating that.
So would you relinquish that to the town and let our engineer do that? You would?
Yep, and now that I need to have some kind of an agreement to allow you to do.
Right. Is that?
So that we're still making sure that we're following our ordinance.
Right. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, from my standpoint. Lot more efficient to work with. Lee.
Yeah.
On on the whole thing rather than dividing up the way it is now.
Okay.
Be more efficient and. If you don't have the whole comments and we be contrary, you're.
Do you wanna send us some sort of an agreement on that?
Yeah. It won't happen anytime soon, but anyway, I'll work on it and then I'll report council and see what we need.
Perfect. Let us know.
Doesn't make sense.
I would like to entertain that.
Staff and that I believe that they ran into Lee on sites before and they're actually doing the same inspection.
Yeah.
So if the town wants to have that authority, you're doing the billing, you're arguing the financial assurance.
It makes sense. Okay.
Do we need to? If we take on this responsibility on behalf of the town, do we have to? Take on any costs associated with the insurance or liability associated with us doing it?
I think it's just a passing reality you're taking away the cost or create to the developer.
Yeah, you're you're already doing a lot of the work and we've had a couple of times where I don't know that the board's gotten all of the comments at the same time or there's different timing. On the various different reviews and we've got one letter from Lee's office and one letter from the county with different conditions, so. And I think it's a it's a no-brainer to bring it all together just from an efficiency perspective.
Fantastic. So hopefully we can hear from you by sometime by the first of the year or so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Jason. Thanks for coming to see us and we look forward to seeing you after the first of the year. Okay, you can sure do that. We'll go through these next ones pretty quick. The first one is a lot line adjustment for Michael Givens on two, three, three Cedar Drive West. Come on up to the microphone. So you're here to get a lot line adjustment on this property that you own.
Yes, good evening, um, chair members, um. Uh, as mentioned earlier, we currently reside at two, three, three River Heights Trail uh inside on Everland Bluffland Park. Um, and we purchase a property just to the north there in two, three, three Cedar Drive West. Um. In the process of working with the county, uh, given apparent that there's three lots that are currently, uh, we're trying to just uh combine them into one lot. Uh, so, uh.
That is so strange that there's one, two, and three.
Yeah, yes, it was for sure. I I double-checked that myself actually, so. Um, but uh just a simple combination uh for some work that we're planning on doing out there.
Yeah.
The work would actually cross over on a lot line just.
Yeah.
Not permitted, so.
Yeah, it's strange. Does anyone have any questions for him? It looks pretty straightforward. I can't believe that's how it was set up and someone actually built on it that way, but okay. Anyone wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the lot line adjustment for Michael Givens. At two, three, three Cedar Drive West. Pit number zero, three, zero dash two, zero, two, zero dash seven, zero. Dash zero, 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 zero.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? I'll need to sign that. Do you have a clean copy with you or not?
Yes.
Okay, just hand it out, hand it to me and I'll sign it quick for you. The next one up is a CSM for Carlson Zener. So we'll just let them come up to the microphone while I sign yours quick. And then you need to provide us a copy from the registered deeds office when you get it filed. No, no, go ahead, Doug. You can start. No, no, go ahead, Doug. You can start.
Um, for the SP, two lot, um, certified survey map land division. Um. Originally approximately ten acre parcel being divided into lots one and two. Uh, a five acre parcel and a four point four acre parcel.
Here you go, Mike. Thanks.
Um, this is in the preservation residential zone. So in addition to the two lots, or it should mainly say a part of the two lots. It's some open space that you can see in with the dash lines. Um, that is four acres of property, which is forty percent. Um, in that open space are, uh, two wetlands, um. That are on this property, so we've kind of. I guess trying to, uh, preserve and protect those wetlands, um, with the open space dedication there. The existing house on lot one, lot two is vacant. The post driveway would come off and call us up there.
Doug, is that, uh, open space and outlaw or what is it?
No, it would just be. A designation.
Yeah.
Restriction.
So that's still part of lot one and part of lot two, just restricted.
Still on those and then you'll see, um, there's a note on the map that basically there's sites that comes. Ordinance as far as how it can be used.
Anyone else have any questions for him? It did pass at the plan commission last week. I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to accept the C S M for Carlson. Zener at thirteen seventy-four Fox Ridge Trail. P I D number zero, three, zero dash one, zero, eight, three dash one, zero dash zero, zero, zero.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, it passes. Here he comes. Um, the next one up here is the consider the pay request for Vader on one forty-fourth. Um, Lee, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, madam chair, members of the board, as you may recall, with the Oaks of St. Croix development contract. Uh, one of the features of the development is that the town would participate in the costs of the reconstruction of one hundred and forty-fourth Avenue. Um, in the area, um, that is beyond the developer's property. Uh, so that the entire road would be improved rather than just a partial section of the road. And in the development contract, it does, uh, stipulate the cost split. Um, between the town and, um, the developer, the town's total cost share of. The reconstruction of the road is forty-six point six nine percent, uh, if you may recall. Uh, recently, the developer has received a, um, invoice from. The contractor and the total amount of, uh, approximately a hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. Um, the way that, uh, the contractor chose to bill that was basically thirty-five percent of the overall project.
Okay.
However, um, uh, that. That method of billing. Sort of takes the entire amount and all of the different things in it and does thirty-five percent. Um, at this point, um, the road is not completely done. So in in an effort to actually. Um, be more accurate as far as what has actually been built. Uh, that the town is responsible for, we went through and did a did a cost breakout of the actual costs. So for example, if we just went with the thirty-five percent of the total bill. Which in theory would include paying for thirty-five percent of some things that aren't done yet. Um, the total would have been twenty-four thousand dollars approximately. But if we go through and we actually calculate what work has actually been done on the road. Uh, and calculate out the percentage that the town, uh, would be responsible for. Um, basically, the the grading of the road, any excavation that occurs. Uh, and the shaping and, uh, graveling of the road and any related roadway. Uh, her frustration, um, we come up with an amount of sixty-nine thousand twenty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Um, which again is significantly less than the total bill of a hundred ninety-eight thousand. So we're not paying more than, you know, what the developer would be paying the contractor. And so that would be our recommendation is to pay based on what's actually been installed and completed. Um, the town inspector has been out and has indicated that the the workmanship is satisfactory. Of what's been done thus far, and so we feel comfortable recommending that amount.
Where's the board on this? Are you okay with what? I mean, you've you've got this in front of you so you can see what. Um, our engineer worked on here as far as what the total is and where we're at. Where are you okay with this? Okay. We also have an outstanding invoice on your part. Do you wanna exchange checks or how do you wanna do this next week?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, cause we have outstanding, we still have an outstanding invoice. From, um, September, October, November, so I presume you've received all these. And I would condition any payment on you exchanging checks with our clerk's office then.
Is is some of this for in this, um, some of this for engineering costs that might be split? That was the only thing.
Oh.
So let's let's talk about future, future payments. Um, so future payments are going to include the base course paving. So that will probably be another separate payment that comes up. Um, and then the last payment, um, or second to last payment, we the wear course paving. And then just the finalization, making sure all the punch list things are done. You know, so there's there's those two payments for sure that would be coming up. The other thing that is part of the cost that that isn't shown on the spreadsheet yet are the engineering costs related to the roadway.
Yep.
Um, so. There's a, there's two different sets of engineering costs. There's the engineering costs from the developer's engineer who went ahead and designed the whole road. So those costs again would be split with the same philosophy, the forty-six point six nine percent. Um, and then the construction engineering that the town's engineer is providing, uh, is the other engineering cost. So. That cost also would be split. So when, um, Mr. Vader and I spoke today, we talked about getting some of those invoices together. So we could start figuring out what that all means. So some of some of those invoices, you know, Mr. Vader may have already paid. Um, so we'll have to decide how we're going to logistically make this all work.
Right, so you have some, you have one invoice from, um, October that you charged thirty-one eighty-three for. Observation of grading tree removal pond construction meeting with the contractor.
Right.
And then you had, um, eleven, twelve, or twenty-four, the new invoice had, um. Project coordination on site with construction paving, timing, blah, 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 for another ninety-six. So those are the two. The rest of the charges have to do with the actual development and the developer's agreement. So that would be something that would be different than the roadway. So how about this? How about if we require him to pay everything but those two invoices? And next meeting, you can come back and tell us what parts ours and what parts his.
We could certainly do that.
Is the board comfortable with that?
I I want some more clarity, so and maybe I was. Thinking too simple when we embarked upon this relationship. I wanna pay for from V. To where his project starts. That's what I agreed to.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
And we're, as a town. It's broke out in there that we didn't help pay for the building pads for the.
We are not paying for the building pads. We are paying only for the road.
All right.
And that's why he's inspecting it as we go.
That I just.
Yep.
People ask, they come to me.
And we're not paying for driveways or anything like that.
Right.
Yep.
That was an allocation that we discussed specifically just for this purpose because there is a sharing. That's the only thing that's being shared.
I'll make a motion to pay to Steve Vader. For the one hundred and forty-fourth Avenue project, an amount of sixty-nine thousand and twenty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Conditional upon him paying the invoices he owes the town. Minus the two invoices from Stan Tech for road review construction. And that those will be decided before the next meeting. Is there a second? You're comfortable with that? And you're comfortable with that?
Yes, the only thing that I would add is we would like to see the design invoices from his engineer.
Yes.
As soon as possible so that this can all be wrapped up.
Can you provide that? Oh, it's on you.
It's on me.
Oh, there's, point your finger, Steve, come on. Feel free, point the finger.
So do we know, uh, have, has this money already been spent by Mr. Vader? Or does he still, I mean. Are we writing the check to Mr. Vader? Are we writing the check to a contractor? Or I don't want to get into a like a lean situation where we, how do we know? I know you well, that Mr. Vader is actually gonna take this sixty-nine thousand dollar check and actually apply it to those expenses. That's my question.
So do you want us to pay your contractor directly?
Yeah, I've already paid. I put thirty-five percent off, so I ordered a check for, I believe it was like a hundred ninety-eight thousand.
Okay, so he's already paid this invoice.
Okay. Everybody understand the question?
Yeah, so would you provide a copy of that to the town just so we know we're covered and in the future? Provide those payments so we know we're paying you directly and we don't have a contractor hanging out there. Okay. That a letter, but it doesn't cover our end, it only covers your end.
Oh, okay.
So if we pay you the check and you don't pay him, he'll come back to us and say, I did your end of the road. Where's my money? See? See, but yeah, I'm not so worried about what you're doing on your end. I'm more worried about what's happening on our end.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we had a second. Is there anything else on anyone? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, it passes. Thank you, Steve. That will have to, you have to present that to the, um, engineer.
Yeah, I mentioned, uh, earlier, uh, we we chatted about that a little bit and the town typically request. Requires the developer to request a letter of credit reduction in writing.
So you need to do that before a December meeting. Yep. And copy the clerk. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, and then.
Yes, go see her. She'll have a check, you'll have a check. Homary Platt for St. Croix Crossing, west of thirty-five on the first that's property. Um, I I knew you were somewhere in here. Yeah, he'll need that. Yeah, if you wanna go on this side or whatever side is fine. I'll let you grab it. Did you grab a microphone? Make sure you grab a microphone.
I'll pass.
Okay, we need to start.
Thank you. I'm Louis, Philkins of Pocket Engineering, here representing Jim Firsteth, he owns the property. Uh, believe it was Anderson, or the Anderson farm. This is, uh, Highway thirty-five, St. Croix River is down in this corner. This shows the entire property. And on the south half here, you can see the, uh, about a third of the property is what is proposed as our space. Open cemetery is right here. Sixty fours over here. We were here last week at the plan commission meeting and we were tabled. There were some concerns about. The rest of the property here, St. Croix County was requiring us at to this forty line. And it just made things a little cumbersome. So since then, we've included all the lands to the north, simplified things a little bit. There is no more, there used to be a little bit of a stub outlot here that's gone. So no action will occur on this tonight, but I think plan commission wanted us to come and. Discuss it so town board would be a little bit more familiar with what's happening. So okay, it was a long meeting. I'll try to just stay brief. This is a single family residential subdivision. We were here for concept approval in April or May. We've been working with the D O T, uh. A type B two intersection which involves turn lanes and a passing lane. And we have a stormwater permit from the D N R. We have comments from Stan Tech. Comments yesterday from highway department on the stormwater on their end and comments from St. Croix County. Is it, it's no longer planning exonerating, it's not community development, I believe. And we'll get all those comments wrapped up in the letter back to the town and county, excuse me, next week. That's in a nutshell. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Well, I'll let the engineer speak first, just so everyone knows, I have our town roadmap plan up there on the screen in case anyone wants to refer to it. And then in a minute, I'll put up something from county.
Uh, madam chair, members of the board, um, the the major issues that we had with our review. Um, did have to do with that northerly property and how that was going to be platted. Um, initially in the original preliminary plat, um, there was a couple of, there was a lot that did not have access to a town road. There was, uh. Some other issues with those lot configurations and and a piece of the road being an outlot. Um, and then questions about access to the northern property and, um, so. Basically, this new preliminary plat, including that northerly northerly property, um, addresses all those issues. Um, and those were the major, major ones. A couple of the other things that we talked about at the plan commission, just in order for. Um, people to be aware, uh, we did talk about the configuration of the roadways in relation to the town's recently adopted. Roadway map. Um, that roadway map does show, um. Uh, alignments along the east side of the property and the south side. Um, those are conceptual as we talked in those meetings, um, in reality, that easterly. Lot line alignment will have to be more to the east so that there can be a row of lots, uh, adjacent, you know, in the future. Uh, to the lots on this plat and similar to the the alignment to the south. So, you know, at this point, we feel that that the roadways as shown, um, can work with the town's map. Um, the other thing that we did talk about a little bit also at the plan commission is. And again, I just brought this up so that people will be aware and and to be thinking about it, um, as to whether or not any of these roads on this particular. Um, uh, plat should be collector or sub collector and, you know, and looking at that map. Um, it doesn't appear that that's really appropriate in this particular area. If you look at those alignments farther to the east and farther to the south, um, there's a couple of roadways on the on the map that's on the. On the screen there that probably, uh, could be considered for collector or sub collectors in the future, but nothing on this plat. Um, so other than that, we also asked for documentation from the state as regarding their requirements for the intersection improvements. With Highway thirty-five, um, we know that they've, uh, looked at designing, as he mentioned. The, um, turn lanes and the bypass lanes, but we've never seen. Anything from the state saying this is what we require in writing, so we'd really like to see that. Um, and then the rest of the comments in the in the memo are just, you know, basically engineering comments that need to be worked through. Um, which I anticipate with the reception of the letter from the county will be able to move forward and dealing with some of those stormwater related issues.
So in deference to what you showed at the plan commission. You've now made the northern part of that southern forty as part of the lot of the northern forty, is that right?
Yes, I didn't do a very good job explaining this lot, this lot eleven. It's not going to be one big building lot, that's going to be future. Roadway and lots. St. Croix County did not want us to end the subdivision here. They wanted us to come up to this line. Thought that it created parcels that were lost, so I can't really explain it. They just wanted us to plant to the forty line. But when we did that, it created some issues with, as we mentioned, outlot and a couple of other lots, so instead just. Went all the way, included all the rest of Jim's property, which is another seventy-five acres. But this is not the end result of the plat. This is gonna be. That seventy-five acres will be used for future subdivision. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Right, I, the concern was how do you get access? To that north part and when you originally started it without lots, it didn't work well because. You're lotting off two lots and you still have the north forty, so you're cutting off access to the north. you're cutting off access to the north forty, now your north forty has no access anywhere. This seems to be a better alignment and kind of answers that problem.
I believe so.
Yeah. So, also, and I'm just going to share my screen here, if you just, I'm not as quick as this as I should be, but here, just a second. We also have, um, county wants us, I'm going to stop the share, county wants us to look at their, um, their roadway bike path. So, I got it here, you just give me a second. And what that means. Share.
Maybe Jason can.
There we go, I'm getting there.
I think it changed a little bit from our initial to where we're at now.
There. So, what this intention looks like is he's coming up around the cemetery, grabbing that short stub road, going through the two side yards of those two lots. What is it, nine and ten, and then going up along sixty-four. Am I right? That's what this shows that she, that she sent me?
Uh, yeah, not sure why she wrote it like that. So, the issue is, is with the Highway thirty-five bike and pen trail, and that coming up here within the right away of State Highway thirty-five, there's actually headstones and stuff within the right of it. And so, it's very, very close, and it could be a very big challenge in that for, uh, the county to build that project there. And so, all we're looking at doing, of course, we don't have any, uh, agreements with Dolkey as far as getting easement coming up this side, but having a potential option and that to skirt Highway thirty-five here is somehow get over here to the State Highway sixty-four right away area, and so, we would be open, you know, and that to some kind of a bike trail easement coming across here, or if it just follows the outline of the cemetery and then goes back to thirty-five and that to connect back up, um, that would be fine too, uh, whatever the developer would prefer. Uh, but if it is something that the county can require in our ordinance, that is that twenty-four access easement.
So, this would be an off-road trail.
Correct, just like.
So, how are you going to protect that cemetery? That you're not going to have people in there off the bike trail doing whatever? Are you going to build a better fence around it? I mean, because I look at that cemetery and think, how are you going to protect that from people, you know, not being the best neighbors?
I don't know, I suppose there's some people that like to complain.
Okay.
So, I'd like for further education, this is pretty, pretty crazy so far. If we put a bike trail along here, and then you're saying you're going to change it to off-road up here? It's going to be off-road going along here, and that, so it's in the right way of Highway thirty-five, just like Phase One was. And that, but still a ten-foot wide bike trail, and it's going to come all the way along Thirty-Five in the right of it.
And then, you were just educated on you have a bridge here.
Yep, and that's the bridge that has the complication. And, and so that's where we're trying to take and roll back up here to County Road E, because that bridge going across with E has bike and pen, uh, weighing already across sixty-four.
So, then, the education pieces, you would find a ten-foot wide blacktop pavement. Choice.
Yeah, more than likely, and that we'd be able to drop back into the, the highway right away, some ways in here, because the lines do get farly apart compared to here, and that we got to take and.
And the strap down, and all, cotton, all that, that's a. Oh, no.
I don't know.
Well, there's a big stormwater, so we want to take and try to skirt along the edge of this, and then come up here, and where these lines start to take it more farther apart, probably in here, that's where we drop back down into the right of it.
So, are you going to fence all that, so those people stay on that trail?
It'd be similar to the loop trail on the north side.
Right, are you going to do that? And why on this drawing, can you explain this to me, Jason? Why in this drawing is there a yellow line coming down alongside that pond all the way to thirty-five?
I don't know.
That's what she said.
That's what I just have, and that, it's, to that, but I mean, that would not be needed if this comes across here. And that, that would be fine, it would not need it to come down back down to Thirty-Five and have a dead end.
My concern is, is that two things, I have a concern about that cemetery, I really have a strong concern about that. And I'm also concerned about the fact that you're building this bike trail through a development. And this bike trail has the potential to be hundreds of bikers on it. We know, we see what the loop trail has. The loop trail is lots and lots and lots, so those of us who've been on it, it's insane at times.
That's where it might make sense more to just skirt that cemetery, deal with the cemetery, the, the cemetery does have a fence around it, doesn't actually go to the full lot line, so it would be, uh, setback off of the cemetery a little bit anyway, but then probably keep the traffic, I assume, from the developer, I mean, of course, it, it would increase our costs, because we got to go to a longer trail, but it would probably make sense then to push it back to Thirty-Five and then along sixty-four. What would be, what would be wrong with bringing it along the street? This is old James Street, we have a new name there, Drininga, that's a Norwegian that we along the street, and then back along the street onto Thirty-Five, and then up. That'd be acceptable.
Well, it's got to be, it's got to be off-road. It's not going to be on those roads.
Right, but adjacent to the roadway.
But I'm saying, I can see a lot of people not wanting that in their front yard, their backyard, their wherever yard. And so, are you going to fence this entire trail?
Not the entire trail, no.
Yeah. And what, and what are you going to do if you don't get that easement from, on the east side of that, that cemetery? Are you going to take it, or what are you going to do?
Well, I believe in that, that the county's got the authority in our ordinance to require a twenty-foot wide bike path, and so the county can stop the approval of the plat.
But he's not part of the, he's not part of the plat here on the east side of that cemetery.
Dolkey?
Right.
That's where, and that having something back here along Thirty-Five would be more beneficial for us.
Yes. Absolutely. I'm just uncomfortable with you running that kind of traffic through a development.
No, and I'm, I'm not even guaranteeing in that, that we need this, or that, but it is a big, big concern, because the tombstones are very, very close to the road out there. And so, uh, it's not a false concern, I mean, it is a real concern, and that, uh, it is something, and that as highways got bigger and wider and stuff, it's approached upon the cemetery. So, I went out here asking for that easement, and that, um, for not a just cause, I guess, and that there is a cause for it, and so, like I said, what we would probably suggest is just following that one lot, it keeps it in one lot. Um, but, I mean, we would be open to what the developer would like to do too.
So, when you say follow one lot, how is it different than what's on the screen?
Instead of coming through the development at the diagonal there, it would literally follow the east side of the existing cemetery, the north side of the existing cemetery, and then along the east side of the Highway thirty-five right away up until it hit, um, and then it would follow along the existing stormwater right away. Drop back into the right of this.
Yeah.
And, yeah, the reason why that whole jungle survey that runs, since the county now requires the remaining parcel to be surveyed, because otherwise, you got the northeast, the northwest, excluding all of these lots in that, within that plat, so the legal description is very messy. That's one of the reasons why our GIS mapping is not always the most accurate.
Well, this plat's coming into us in the next month or so, while, because it's going back to Plan Commission next month. So, we're not ma- necessarily making a decision tonight, because they, they delayed it for a month. I, I have a lot of concerns with what's up on this screen.
Sometimes.
And if you're even going to set, talk about going up and around that cemetery, how are you controlling that traffic? And what are you going to do to Mr. Dolkey if he says no to that easement?
Well, and then, then we wouldn't use this easement here, we would try and take and make something work up here, you know, and that which could be archaeologically or whatever, if it's possible, and make that connection. Otherwise, yeah, it might be unfortunate, but we may have to cross or go around, so.
I think you have to look at all options, I don't think this can be your first. Um, and I'm just saying that because it, it seems problematic to me personally, I just see that in that. Um, and I don't think, having that, even if you go up and around that cemetery, which is what's, that rectangle there in that picture, I find that problematic to people, I just don't see that that's a good, a good mix. Bruce, did you want to say anything, or did I say enough for you? Okay.
So, it sounds like the town would be okay with the bike path along Thirty-Five and the rear side of these lots.
Right, with a fence on the rear sides of those houses.
Cemeteries.
Yeah. But I think it has to be fenced on the, back the end of those lots, because I think no one wants to have people wandering around their land.
I don't believe there's any requirement that that trail would have to be fenced, so.
I know there's not, but that doesn't mean we can't make the request to the county on that. Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Anything else, if anybody? Anton?
Actually, yeah, the, that's not our county, but it's fenced, it's built up.
Yep.
Oh, Bridget?
Yeah, Bridget.
Second, in terms of fencing, if you're talking about fencing here, I'm not sure how that's different from the parts farther south.
Oh, down, uh, down here. Yeah. I think it's different when they're in backyards, and when we did the development here on VN thirty-five, he bermed it. So, he has that natural barrier. This, you know, may be something to talk about. Anything else from the board? Yes?
Sorry, Roger. So, my question is a general question, would be, whatever what you're talking about, for trails on the yellow map up on the front of the board and or on the bottom, I question the diminished value that has occurred on lot one and two to your investors. And all that's, and again, when we bring up the hundreds of people that are going to be going around and then through there, I would say that we'll try to figure out where you put a house, you plot lot one, by, or two, I just, I'm just posing it as a general question overall, and I, I agree that, uh, with respect to the southern property that to put that as your first approach for taking care of the problem, I don't agree with that at all.
Well, value's not really the board's consideration, though, I mean, that's a, that's an ownership. To, to see, yeah, I mean, that's.
Pointing it out, and where you're talking, this could go through, and what all that creates, the level around there.
And this property does fall underneath the county's man-division ordinance, and the county can require a twenty-foot easement, and that for bike trail purposes, and that since this property falls within the town. And that I have an app there, was provided by Kelly Becker, as an option to the developer, to say, well, if you want to listen to your development, that's your choice, and that or you want to drop back around, and that onto Thirty-Five, that's your choice. And that, but the company does have just cause, and that for looking at this, and that upon this preliminary plat review, because of the future plans, the company's got a bike and plan, plan, we've got a Highway thirty-five plan that showed a bike trail connecting through here, and we all know about the archaeological impacts and that of tombstone within the right of it. And so, um, the, the, the county, I, I believe, would go up and over, and that, I mean, that bridge, and that will be three hundred and twenty-nine feet long, and that, so, I mean, if that became an issue, then that would divert to the west side, to three hundred and twenty-nine feet, and then divert back across, more than likely.
I do think, though, it's a fair question for the board to consider whether they want a trail running through the backyards of yeah, of, uh, residential properties, right? I mean, that's.
That doesn't bother me as much as this cemetery. I have a real issue with trying to go around that alongside of it. I have a real issue with that cemetery. I'm just going to say that flat out. That bothers me probably more than anything, and then you're requiring the adjoining landowner to supply you with land to do that route around, or however you're going to do it, which is not part of this subdivision.
Right, that's the problem with the road going through here, and that, is because then we're tied to having an easement here. And that versus if we secure this road here, we have it across the front of Thirty-Five, and that, and whether or not we can get it to Dolkey, and that to have an easement, and that, then maybe this part just doesn't get used, but we're still protected and that for going this way.
Yeah.
So, that's our main priority, I guess, and that would be this here and on, because then we have two options, we can either try to get the easement from Dolkey, or we can go to here, we can drop over on the other side of the road, and come back over and still make.
Our connection.
So, if you drop from the east side to the west side, how does that work when you said earlier this evening that the speed limit was, uh, when you want, didn't want traffic coming?
Well, that's, that's ideally, you know, and that, I mean, that, that's a safety concern, you have to have, so that's why. So, so that's why, well, it'd be just like at the south end of Old Thirty-Five right now, where we got two RRFPs, but we can't gate across, walk across Thirty-Five, because it's fifty-five mile an hour traffic. And so, that's where we're trying to look at this foresight, and that, and say, hey, maybe that is an option that we would consider at that point.
Anything else from the board for him? And for the developer? Come on up to my, I don't have a mic for you, shoot. Nobody's, oh, here's a mic. Here's a mic coming. They both have them over there, so I have no mic to give you.
Just because I drive that way eighteen times a week, you know, I know all that whole roadway, of course, and, you know, if you were to avoid the cemetery, and if you were going to cross, if that were to happen, there's so much land on that other side, on the west side, that seems like farmland or something, that doesn't have any homes or driveways now. Last thing I wanted is it to be on the west side on Cedar Drive, because that's our property, right there along there before, before Cedar Drive. But, I mean, if you're going to cross, which you don't want to do, why wouldn't you cross before the cemetery, so you could use that whole stretch, so that there aren't any driveways, curb around? And I've, I've only been here four years, so like, I'm clueless compared to all of you elders of the community, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's the terrain, it's, well, the terrain on the west side of the road here, you can see it's very solid lines, uh, very steep contours, and there is a a lot of homes in that, that are going fairly close to the road in this area as well, and so then, yes, you're running right through their yards, and that, and they're not used to it. Whereas on a new plat like this, and they're buying it knowing that that easement exists.
Yeah. I, I'll just, you know, reiterate, I'm really having a problem with the cemetery. And I will, till you come up with another plan here, that's where I personally am standing. And you can require, you know, that easement from this developer on the backside of those lots to get up to that north end, but somehow, I think you have to take a closer look at Thirty-Five and what you're going to do there. And I understand the archeology part of it, but I think you take a better look at this, and not just think, you know, I'm going to buy an easement from Dolkey, and I'm going to put this around that cemetery.
We definitely will, and that, I guess, at that point, because it's a lot cheaper for us to build three hundred and thirty feet versus in that building, you know, almost a thousand feet or more, and that going up and around. So, we might take them, but we won't know that until we actually have an archaeological study out there, and then find out what side of those tombstones that remains are on, et cetera.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else have anything to say?
Good question, so there's no physical way of, instead of bridging over, just going under, like we would with a, I don't know, I hate to say this, but it's something that I think we did on Old Thirty-Five, when we had the cows, and they had bridged the two parcels over there before the new bridge was finished, is they built under the under the road.
Yeah, we have it on Valley View. We have a couple of those.
Well, you do it unless you go further south. There's been too many directions given to me. But if you build on the other side, then you avoid the whole
Yeah.
process. I know it's not the cheapest route, but then it gets you out of all of the back forth, back forth, with the cemetery and everything else, if you can build prior to popping over.
All right, anything else? We'll see you back next month.
Teresa, is there any, any specific direction that the board wants to provide to the Plan Commission? Or to the developer as it goes back to the Plan Commission? Or to the developer as it goes back to the plan commission?
The big thing for the plan commission was the fact that he had two outlets at the top of that first forty that were not allowing road access to the top forty. So that was, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Anton, that was the big stickler. Because if you don't give access through those two outlets, now that top forty is landlocked. So he came back with this option to us, which I think is a much better option that allows that top, those two outlets to be attached to that forty, but go ahead. Right.
Like, dimensional.
Right.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that there's.
Build up the road.
Right.
So that was the issue, because it, look, he's changed it since plan commission saw it.
I just, I know these guys are trying to adapt
Yeah.
to the board so that they've got good data, good information.
And I think we're in a much better place on this one. Are you feeling comfortable with that new lot?
Yes, I feel like we can address all comments.
Yep.
The only thing really that's standing out there is the bike path.
Yep.
That I don't want.
Okay. Anything from anyone else? Otherwise, we'll see him back here in a month. Thank you.
So.
Thank you, Jason. I'll go ahead.
One piece of it. So if the bike trail is coming in here, right?
No, it's coming down at thirty-five. Then it goes up and around.
Is it up?
And over and back.
What? Why can't we share, you know, the county would share and who would?
Well, that, that's what's up here on the screen, Chris.
Right.
But it comes back to they don't have that part because that belongs to Mr. Dalkey. And I come back to the, I come back to the fact that it's next to a cemetery. You know, so anyway, we'll all think about this and next month will be a new, new day. Thank you both. Thank you for sticking around, Jason. Um, board, I know some people are here tonight for the part, no parking signs on, um, hold on here.
Number eight?
Number, well, yes, it's seven B and eight. So it's both things. One has to do with no parking signs. One has to do with asking the county, um, the state for some flexibility on the Willow River State Park. So I will make a motion to move seven B and eight up to this point in the agenda.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So that passes. So I know some of you are here for this. Just to bring everyone up to speed, we received multiple, and I mean many multiple, um, um, videos and complaints about parking on both sides of Nelson Farm Road and Nelson Farm Lane for the, um, the bikers that were using it instead of parking in the parking lot. We did, uh, the board made a motion to install no parking signs on Nelson Farm Road, Nelson Farm Lane and Perch Lake Road. I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, we had some cars towed off of there.
Yeah.
Since then, I've not seen any and I recheck it periodically.
An educational experience.
Um, we changed our message on our answering here, so in case your car does get towed, you know who to call to get it back. Um, but we have residents here tonight that, um, and I don't, I can't speak for all of them. Some of them are opposed to the no parking signs. Some of them may be here in, in favor of them. Um, our former fire chief was the one who alerted me and, um, somebody sent me the video of fifty-four cars on that road and it was not wide enough to get emergency vehicles through. He's one of the bikers. He asked that we pay attention to that because he was concerned that there's enough residents back in there that was gonna become a life-threatening issue. Um, the board took a look at it and we made that decision and we did, um, install those. I don't know, it's been about a month, month and a half, I guess. So that's where we're at. So we have some people here tonight that are for it and some who are against it. So who wants to come up to the microphone first? You introduce yourself and where you live.
We go up to turn, yeah, turn that on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. My name is, is Tim Nixon and I live at four eighty-one Nelson Farm Lane. And I'm here really representing, um, almost all of my neighbors and I've talked to almost all of them, um, in my, um, neighborhood there. And some of them were here earlier and had to leave. John is still here and probably will have something to say about this. Um, as, as Madam Chair mentioned, uh, we, we have thirty-three tow-away signs. A little over a mile going through our neighborhood. Okay? Thirty-three. And it doesn't, it just doesn't pass the smell test. It's just, it looks awful. Nobody would want to have these tow-away signs all over their neighborhood like this. And so the, the question that we're trying to ask and propose, uh, maybe there's a different solution for with the board is yeah, emergency vehicle access is critically important, right? But do we really have the right solution here for that problem? And could we reduce the number of tow-away signs? So that everybody doesn't have these signs in front of their houses along the road. And I, what, what we'd like to do is work with you on a modified solution to this problem. That, you know, reduces the number of signs, but still solves the, the parking problem. So I hope that sounds reasonable to you, but, you know, my neighbors are really upset. So, you know, I, I hope you take this, take this seriously. Nobody would want this here.
Just, one thing I spoke to you about or is that where those signs are placed are not your yards. That is the town road right of way, just so everyone is clear. That is your right, that is our right of way.
Sure.
Um, we were instructed to do so by our engineer that the best way to enforce this is to space them approximately three hundred feet apart. Which is approximately what they are. Obviously, he didn't place them in the middle of your driveway if that was where the actual three hundred foot marker was. And I know this one's up here and that sign is right on the edge of the mow and grass, because I, I drove that road a couple of times and I looked at all of them very carefully. I know that it probably isn't the prettiest look. I get that. But if you had to call nine-one-one and they can't get through there, I think that attitude might be a different attitude. So I'm willing to listen to a way to mitigate that. But if we can't enforce it because our signs are further than three hundred feet apart, I don't know what we do.
So we'd just like an opportunity to explore alternatives.
So what is your suggestion?
With, with a lawyer. Um, you know, what alternatives could there be, still being consistent with our goals? Right, side party. That's what we would like. But propose, you know, a good idea for you.
Go ahead, John. Yeah.
Well, he has to get on the microphone, so I can only have one at a time. Sorry.
John Andrews.
Yeah.
Marson, I live at five oh three Nelson Farm Lane. Our, our, we were, we never complained, but we know some people did.
Yes.
I'm not arguing the complaints. And yes, um, certain days, Tuesday night Bike Club was horrible. But our, our question is, could we have parking on one side? Why, why do we need restricted parking on both sides? Why do we have signs on forty-five degree angle hills that you couldn't park on if you wanted to? So, so we, we don't, we've never had anyone park on Nelson Farm Lane. Nelson Farm Road, yes. Nelson Farm Lane, no. No one ever comes down that far, especially all the way down into the cul-de-sac. There, there's no one ever there. It used to be such a beautiful, peaceful, I mean, I, I love saying so township because we preserve land. We, we embrace nature. We're, we're all that kind of thing. And now I look like I'm in an industrial park because there's a sign all the way down my street. It's just it really, I think it distracts from the value of my property. And, and it's just, I, I think there's gotta be a better way to, to do that. I, I don't, I think the Bike Club was also not consulted at all. They, they came to me and said, why did you guys complain? I said, well, can you just, yeah, we're, we're willing to do what you want. We'll park correctly. I mean, I think there, the, the, how people were parking absolutely, they shouldn't have taken it in slow. But I can tell you the signs don't work. People still park there. I called the sheriff before and the sheriff says, I don't run police now. I'm sorry, I don't do that.
No, it has to come from, from one of us on the board. So we get them towed. It doesn't come from the sheriff.
But, but it's not working. There's people still parking on the street.
I can't be there twenty-four seven, but I'm looking at residents to let me know if they're there.
Call me.
Yeah.
Call me. I love towing cars.
Yeah. But I'm gonna come back to this, that you can say, state to me that, yes, they were on Nelson Farm Road, but not Nelson Farm Lane. Once we put those signs up, guess where they started parking? River Road. River Road.
I mean, but they, they're not parking on Nelson Farm Lane, okay?
But if we would not have signed it, they would have. They're on bicycles. They don't care how far they have to ride.
Are you guys open to an, an alternative that we could come up with?
Present something to us on this.
Cause I, I mean, I really think you've been down, well, you've been down.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with it.
I mean, it's crazy. I mean, nobody would tolerate this. It's, it's, it's ridiculous. Thirty-one signs.
I, I know how many there are. I, I ordered them along with on Perch Lake Road. So Perch Lake Road is, is signed from County Road E to Sixtieth. And I have to say, not a single person has called me. I don't know if the board has heard from anyone there. Dan's on that road. I don't know that anyone's called on that road because of the problems we've had with parking on the road there also. And, you know, my, my position is, I understand where you're coming from and that you don't like that look. I get that. And I'm hoping this is only a temporary problem that will have a permanent solution elsewhere, which is what we're in. Um, talks with the state park on is to try to get them to increase their parking. They're increasing their trails. They need to increase their parking, so they're not using our roads. Because that's not what those roads are meant for.
Teresa, maybe we should talk about that right now.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So, um, about three weeks ago, Zach, our fire chief and myself sat down with Aaron Mason from the state park. Okay? Uh, we had almost a three-hour conversation with him to discuss this particular issue and just parking in general because of the bike trails and the growth over at Willow River State Park. And the first thing you know is, and, uh, first of all, it was a really good conversation with him, okay? We put everything on the table and talked about it. And he was, first of all, he was very upfront about the bike trails themselves. In, in addition to Willow River State Park, but many of the other state parks within Wisconsin, it is the largest growth area for recreation in the state of Wisconsin are bike trails. They're not gonna go away. Okay, we, so we, we all have to accept that.
That's great. We love bikers.
Okay. Okay. So then we talked about a little bit about, well, what, you know, let's look at what parking we have out there already today. Okay? And they have tons of parking in the park itself. If you go down by the dam, you know, down there. And that is great, but unfortunately, many of the bikers can't access the bike trails from that parking lot. Because the trails are on that side are some of the most difficult trails. And it's too far away. What, pardon?
You have to pay a permit.
And you have to pay a permit too, okay? But so we looked at their existing lots and they, uh, and along Nelson Farm Trail and on River Road, okay? And then we came back to what their thought was about increasing the park. And what they don't want to do is they do not want to create another big lot somewhere. They would rather create smaller lots that have a smaller impact, but can provide additional parking. Okay? Now, a few years ago, this is, I was off the board at the time, but there was a proposal to put a, a lot on Troutbrook Road right near down near the town line. The people, it's used there today a little bit. And that was gonna be a minimum of a fifty-car lot at that time. And they still have all the plans and everything ready to go for that lot. And the reason that it's not built today is because the town kind of raised their hand and said, you know, maybe this isn't the best idea to put a parking lot here. Okay? But in the big picture of things is that we have to look at reality here and kind of work with our, to try to help them come up with a solution. And the park, uh, is willing to scale back that particular lot. Okay, to a twenty-five car lot. Hopefully with the town's support. But we should also keep in mind here is that they are being very cooperative here in that if they wanted to, they could build that lot no matter what. They don't even have to ask our permission, other than getting a driveway permit, probably, go into that lot. But they want to work with us to do it. And in addition to that lot, they'll look at other locations around, okay? That will probably be able to add additional smaller lots. Okay, we're trying to what, what we're trying to do is avoid people for sure not parking their cars on River Road. I know that the fire department for sure does not like cars parking on River Road. The hunters during the hunting season are really pretty good. They get off the road. They know what to do for the most part and we're not too worried about those, okay? And he also, um, said that he will work with the, the bike, the biking clubs. It's primarily the Stillwater Club right now, but believe me, there's gonna be more clubs. It's, it's a, it's a growth area. To make sure they know where they should be parking on the lots and to stay off the streets as ne- as necessary. And what I think the town should do is, you know, if we, we'll have to talk about it, but is support that twenty-five car lot off of Troutbrook, which would take a lot of cars up in Nelson Farm because they access the same trails. It's just from a different side of the, of the lot. Okay? And then work with them on the development of additional lots going forward. Okay? And now what that might do is allow us, if that works, to eliminate some of the no parking signs that, that are probably, you know, that people are upset about. By the way, I'm one, I'm that person on Perch Lake Road and we have a, we have a lot more signs than you do. But nobody on our road is complaining. Just let you know, because we, our issue has been a lot worse than Nelson Farm Road for many, many years. And we're just glad that they're there now. But I think if we work together with the park and the fire department to make sure we come up with a solution here, I think we can. We, I don't, I don't think we should be drastic and take them out right away. Let's, you know, let's, you know, it's been, what? Two months.
Two take.
And by the way, the biking season's winding down here. You know what I mean? It's, it, it turns order to fat tire season here. Winter set and, and it gets a little bit less. But I think the, I think the, the, the signs on Nelson Farm Road sent a message. Okay? And that wasn't necessarily send them, we didn't want to send the message to the property owners. We want to send it to the Bike Club. You know, that we have to work with them to give, get a solution going here. You know, and by the way, uh, um, excuse me, but I think they're ready to put in that lot next year. You know, right away in the springtime, if they, if they saw that the town was gonna support it, they, they do it. Plus, they do everything they can to make it off-road as possible. You know, and so it's not sitting there right there and try to keep, we don't want bikers on the road.
Right.
You know, we don't want people parking on Troutbrook Road with the same issues that Nelson Farm Lane. But at least it's a step in the right direction. And I don't think there's one thing we can come up with tonight to solve the problem for everybody. But I think if we take baby steps in getting this done, I think it, over time, hopefully we'll come to a, a positive resolution for it.
Anyone else on the board want to speak?
Yes, I'd like to speak for a minute. The other people that aren't here, who live down there, who had concerns, who came forward about wanting these signs, aren't here and aren't speaking. We took their considerations in and we saw the safety issues of it. They showed us pictures of it. We acted on it the best way we could. Our thought process was absolutely thinking how people are rude is that if we put signs on Nelson Farm Road and not on the other road, that they would go down there and fill up your cul-de-sac, that they literally don't care about Saint Joe when they're biking. They park their vehicles and leave.
I, I agree. They're gonna find another spot. And that's why the board made that decision, was to try to get this under control. Uh, you know, when you have a former fire, fire chief from this town who is a biker, who says to us, you got a major problem, here's a picture, you can't get an ambulance through there, you can't get a fire truck through there. I think we as a board have to look at that safety issue for all residents. And that has to supersede everything else. I am a hundred percent with Dan on that. There are things that we're trying to do with the state park that will alleviate this, but you will always have bike clubs who the word on the street is, we're gonna come use your This, but you will always have bike clubs who the word on the street is, we're gonna come use your. The state park, but we're not gonna pay to do it. And that's what started this, is that the word on the. Bike post, why you can come in Saint Joe, park on this road and you don't have to pay a dime, just show up. That becomes problematic because the more and more and more, I mean, I have two videos of forty some cars and one with fifty four cars on it. That someone actually took from River Road all the way in and back over and back out. That's an, that's an enormous amount of cars on that road. It's unfortunate.
In terms of safety, and I a hundred percent agree, I have the same concern. My only comment was, again, why not let parking on one side of the road? That would, you could still get ambulance, you could still get fire truck through. I don't understand why they had to go both sides and shut them down.
Well, why don't we let Zach try me on that? Zach, how do you feel about one sided parking? I mean.
We, you have access. On one side of the road, we should be able to. Uh, I'm okay with your car, ambulance wise, with one side of the road you park and one side of the. It was the end.
Yeah.
What's the specific question for the engineer?
Well. We decided to do both sides of the road and there was some thought process that went into that. Rather than one side, and I know part of it was for the integrity of the roadway, because we were starting to get. Collapsed culverts and stuff like that, but you can speak to how you sign that and how we can enforce.
Well, the signing, you know, the the spacing of the signing was was really based on what we researched in the state. Documents about signing. Um, basically, the slower the speed limit. That you have, the closer the signs have to be. So think about a downtown urban area, right? You've gotta have. Signs at least every block, maybe more. So with a fifty five mile an hour speed limit, which is typical on the town roads. You know, going up to three hundred feet is acceptable for that. And so that that was our basis for the the spacing. Um, you know, as far as. As far as the, you know, both sides versus one side, you know, obviously one side will get more wear and tear. Um, if you allow that, so that's just something that has to be factored in.
What about two cars? Let's say the entire side of the road is filled with vehicles that are parked. What what, how easy is it for two cars to get back? Uh, go by each other on the remaining portion of the road without going off the, without going on to the.
With with parking on one side?
If somebody's parked on one side of the road.
It's still gonna be difficult.
It's gonna be difficult for two cars to get by each other. They're gonna slow down and creep by each other.
That's only a twenty two foot top.
I mean, yeah, you understand what we're talking about there?
If it's safety, absolutely, I I don't like both sides. There there is a a rule in Wisconsin and everybody knows it. If you wanna park your car in state park property, you gotta pay. You wanna ride a bike in the street. And that's why they all wanna park on 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 the non-state parks lots. If you put a lot in on River and they have to pay. They're gonna start or on on Troutbrook, they're gonna have the same problem, because people, most of them are coming from Minnesota. You know, out of Minnesota plates and and they don't wanna pay for Minnesota state park pad.
Right.
So so I I I understand it, but yeah, I just think that. It was a drastic, you know, all of a sudden, you know, parking everywhere. And then if if I have friends over and I want people to park on the street. Now I can't, I mean, is there any way we could get a permit or something like that that says? Hey, if I'm having an event, we have neighborhood parties, uh, you know, at Christmas and in the summer. And people drive down, can we get some way to not get towed?
That was something that the board is talking about, considering we just haven't come up with a solution to that. Because I stated too, that people who wanna get their driveway seal coated would have to park in the road, because some of us. I mean, I'm lucky enough, I have a level yard, but not everybody does, so you'd be forced out there. So. I mean, I see that there's issues that would arise, and we did talk about that as a board, but we didn't come up with a solution yet. And you still had something to say back there, Zach?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh. I I think, you know, like thinking about the road and how good they can be and access to the homes that are on. The back part of the the road. I, I'll I'll go back on what I said. I think right in front of the parking lot, it needs to be the whole, whole sides.
Sure.
Um, because that access needs to be open.
Yep.
Um, your road, if you're okay with people parking on it, it would be a single sided road, like you could park on that because it's less. Less traffic, for sure. There's a lot, a lot of traffic on that road. And I can think about ways where if you have one on the side and then we're trying to access, we're gonna be waiting for people. Eventually leaving the parking lot and. Um, but thinking about how how busy that road is. I would prefer it to be open, at least around that part.
Well, and I think the cul-de-sacs, you have to be careful of those too, because they can get jammed up with cars and you can't make the turn. Cause it's not a big cul-de-sac down there. So where does the board wanna go on this?
Well.
Oh, you had.
We're. I'm a voice of reason. The cars that I've towed off there has been from your other homeowners that live down there that have called me. I'm the one that deals with them. I'm the go to person on it. If you're gonna have a party, there's a voice of reason.
Yeah.
The other people that aren't here, who were supporting the no parking signs. Are the ones that call me to dictate who's getting towed. They send pictures. And then I forward that on and make the judgment call. So there is a voice of reason if you're having. An event at your house or something, you can easily contact the clerk and make mention of that. While we work through this situation. The other people aren't here and we don't need to have a battle of who's. Who's not here and who is present here. There was other people concerned.
So, so could we get your number so we can give it to all the neighbors? Because I called the sheriff and they said no.
Right, right, because it's a town road.
Okay, I've never seen a sheriff run there the whole time I've.
Right, right.
So there's a process then. The process is we called you and you called tow truck.
Yeah, and you can call me. And you can, and you can call me. My number's on the answering machine. You can call me on the website, so I'm in the same position he is.
With our fire permit, we have a burn permit. Hey, I'm gonna have a Saturday, we call and say, hey, you know, between this space, we're gonna have a party. And people call us and complain about the cars, please don't tell them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because some of your neighbors are the opposite of you two.
Yeah.
That'll be their names.
Yeah, I've been very surprised if we have any neighbors who like this.
Uh, I'm, that's what's fun about, that's what's fun about the public here is there's another side.
There's another side of it.
People go ask them.
Yeah.
Well, you have to be nice when you ask.
But don't just say, don't just ask them if they like signs. Ask them if they've called because cars have been parked on the road. Yeah. All right.
We don't have a problem. We don't want cars parked on the road. We have a problem with inclusion, which is all the signs as they go by the.
See, the problem is you can't tow them unless you abide by certain standards. So if they're not a certain distance apart, you can't, you can't tow them. I mean, you can't.
I'm just trying to understand that, not now, but I just wanna understand that conclusion, because when I I'm a lawyer and when I read that language. I don't see a specific mandated distance. I see a lot of discretion in that language about how far the signs need to be apart. So I I don't wanna take this up now, you know, it's everybody's time, but I'd like to at least understand that better. That's okay.
Is there a chance that this could go to the next public works meeting?
Certainly.
Chris, are you okay with that?
Looking forward to it.
Okay.
But before we, before we leave.
Right.
What about supporting this twenty five car parking lot on Troutbrook Road?
I'm su- I've supported it from the beginning.
But issue prior to this was because they wanted to use Troutbrook as the bike trail to access the park, the the lot.
And they're not saying that today.
And I think they've changed their mind on that, because they realize that that's really not a good use of that roadway, so I'm in support of it.
The other.
As long as they're not using Troutbrook Road as their bike designated bike.
Put that caveat in. The the other concern that was brought up at the time, because I remember that was like my second meeting ever. Was it was not a conversation of the town of Saint Joe gets an opinion. It's the state park is putting in a fifty car parking lot. That that's the end of the discussion. You will get a request to give us the easement for the driveway. That was, that was the whole correspondent.
And they didn't do it though.
Well, they they got a very curt response from us. I think the other issue was is that there was a lot of concern about the wear and tear on a rustic road. And there's some additional expense limitations that a rustic road could accommodate. Things have changed since they brought that up to us in twenty twenty.
Do you wanna make a motion, Dan?
Well, I just, okay, oh, okay. I'll make a motion that the town. Um, convey to Willow River State Park via Aaron Mason, that we would be in support of Willow River State Park. Constructing a twenty five car parking lot off Troutbrook Road with the caveat that no bike trail access would be. Used on Troutbrook Road itself.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think that's a great motion. I think that conveys exactly what we want.
Okay.
So all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. Anything else on this? We appreciate you coming.
Thank you for your consideration.
So just know that we'll be working on this forward and hopefully. Things change next summer and we can remove those signs, which would be great to be able to do it. All right. And Jason, did you have fun listening to that one?
Just so you know, the next public works is on your agenda for uh, uh, December third.
The reason why I'm on that is because of Perch Lake Road and the county is putting in some full parking in that at Perch Lake.
Fantastic, yep.
Um, that you and I had talked about that a couple of times on the forums. I believe that work is actually gonna start tomorrow.
Good.
And uh, so it's about twenty one spaces or so and that, so. Um, we're all trying to address where we did and shut off our park entrance. If the park is full, it'll be up by the entrance. It'll be not up by the road.
That'll be helpful.
Hopefully in twenty twenty five here that our parking issue of Perch Lake.
Can I make one little suggestion that came up to me by a variety of people is why does the county allow non-residents? Of this state to use your parks at the same price as residents pay?
That's changing in twenty twenty five too.
Fantastic.
And that, so if you take the tax levy dollars that goes into our park budget. And you take and divide that total dollar amount by the number of citizens within Saint Craig County, comes out to be a couple four dollars and eighty nine cents. And so going forward, a day pass for an out of state will be five dollars more, and in the annual pass will be for out of state, it'll be five dollars more.
Fantastic. I think people will love that. Thank you so much. Thanks for hanging with us.
Thank you.
No, we appreciate it. All right, guys, we're on to the town hall, the new building. First of all, we have pay request number five. Would you like to speak to that? Oh, no, I've been Bruce though. Bruce, come on up to the table.
Please, come on down.
And then we'll bring the fire chief up next to you too. We can all have a little discussion here. So pay request number five.
We have the reviewed and submitted application to buy for the good town hall project. Uh, in the amount of two hundred fifty seven thousand, two hundred eighty dollars and three cents.
Does this include, have we? Have we paid for this concrete? Have they not submitted?
Is there a print on pay request?
Oh, it's that, it was up there on the bills.
Oh, usually.
It was sitting up there. I know. I don't think you got that one. I apologize. She's got it right there. Give it to Justin so he can take a peek.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure that somewhere along the way, we're gonna still owe them money on what they've worked, they've done, just so we can get that concrete taken care of and done.
Well, absolutely.
Okay.
We're, we're holding a five percent retention.
Yeah.
Currently on project.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve pay requests number five to Berghammer Builders for two hundred fifty seven thousand, two eighty two and eighty cents.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. Update on furnishings. I don't have a whole lot of update on furnishings on anything. Saint Croix Electric rebates. Justin, you should have gotten all the information you need, correct or not?
Teresa submitted it, was what I was told.
Oh, Terry, Terry did it.
Well, you, you did it.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, this, this Teresa, this Teresa, she really had, her name's really Teresa, if you didn't know, but she doesn't use it. Okay, Midwest Gas, North Coast Communications, Saint Croix Electric, they've all plowed in. They're all to the building, so it is exciting that that's done. I know, Wolf Wolf is right.
The Saint Croix Electric's bill about what we expected.
No, I didn't think it was gonna be that much, but it is.
It was, I haven't even seen the actual bill.
It's in the bills.
Nope, it's got a X on it. It was canceled.
No, no, it wasn't canceled. It's in, it's in the.
Look at the slip. It says it right there. It says it's got an X next to the payment.
No, there's a check here.
Yes, zip at the top. It's the fifteen thousand.
That's what it means. It's reconciled and cleared.
I thought there was an X next to it as well.
It is. It's reconciled and cleared. That's what that means in QuickBooks.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've already paid them.
Yes.
I would love to see the invoice, because I'm trying to understand how they came to that number.
Well, he's looking at that. We will move on to Sunnylink. So our original.
Oh, I have comments on that too.
Our, our, our original estimate on Sunnylink was thirty five thousand. He took away one of the quotes we had and brought back a new one for all the. Um, security system. We still have the quote for. Um, the other two, two of the other things, the network wiring for the town halls and the access control systems. So the total on these comes to thirty two thousand, eight hundred and twelve dol- I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong line. Thirty three thousand, five twenty four fifty. That's these three quotes. And you have an issue with which one? What one?
Um, I'm fine with the one for. I believe the doors, which is.
That's the access control.
Two, two.
Zero.
One, zero.
Yeah.
The one I have the issue with is the one with the cameras on it, because.
This one.
Yes. So I did some digging in all of the the Geo Vision equipment.
Yeah.
It it's all licensed to Windows ten, which is an end of life, so we would be buying into something that. That is discontinued in four, uh, five months.
So we can sure put that as part of our motion, that he would look for a different camera system that would be compatible with a new Windows program?
Well, I mean, the the company itself doesn't have any posted Geo Vision on their site, so we would. I don't even know that we could approve anything on that at that price point, because. He's gonna have to go find another vendor.
Right.
And the, the reason I'm not, but you know, I I've kind of expressed this before is, we're buying, if you look at the. I don't have the right quotes in front of me. Um, if you look at the Sunnylink quotes or. Uh, his cabling. We're buying into, I do have an issue with this one as well. But we're buying into the ubiquity system for everything that is like the router, the Wi-Fi access points, and then we're buying. A different brand for the cameras, and then we're buying another different brand for the doors. And I, I'm a big believer in simplification, everything in one spot. Um.
You should have been at that meeting.
Yeah, well.
If they didn't start me at five AM every day, I'd have been there.
So I'm comfortable with approving to two quotes and not the third, but I do wanna get some of this locked in.
Sure, I'm fine with the the cabling one. He doesn't have. I do have a concern about the cameras. I.
That's fine.
Um, the other thing is. The. Access, so the access control one, I don't see an issue with. That's the doors.
Yeah.
Um, the electronic strike, although miscellaneous electric strike and hardware to be determined.
That's because he's waiting for some information from Twin City Hardware on something. So he's put a price in there, but that can change.
Okay.
So he's only asking us to pay him half down on these quotes. And obviously, we'll have some flexibility in the interim, because he's waiting for something back from the contractor.
Okay.
Yep, and I, and I did have a conversation with the at Twin City Hardware, I gave them a call.
Yep.
Their hardware can work with both twelve and twenty four volt systems. So I told Lee that our conversation with Tim is all of his equipment that's coming in is twelve volt. And we make sure that all of the door hardware that's being furnished as part of the project is twelve volt compatible.
Okay.
So that's been confirmed. That that's.
So on the quote. I don't know why I can't, oh, uh, quote. Two, two, zero, one, one.
Yeah.
He's. He's got a cabinet, a twelve U cabinet in this quote.
Yes.
Which is like that.
Oh, and we need that.
Well, I thought we had talked to. The name is going to excuse, uh, escape me, or they were going to donate the full, a full room cabinet, the big one, remember?
Mark.
Mark. And that's, you know.
All right, well, we can sure change that.
So if if Mark doesn't have it anymore.
Right.
Otherwise, I will probably have something maybe a little bit bigger than this.
All of that should go in together. Okay.
Um, and then if you look on the line item called U six pro. It's the wireless access points. For anyone who wants a reference, it's the white dome in the sky, what you see.
Up here.
The version he's got listed in here is actually not the standard anymore. So we would want him to install the actual standard solution. Which is uh now uh what's called a Wi-Fi seven. So this is about. Three years out of date.
Sure. Okay. I can make those changes.
Okay.
Hold off on his newest quote on this Geo Vision and tell him that we need to have an updated.
Yeah, I mean, it's the, what we need to have, and we have to have a vendor who has um a li- like. Software that won't be at end of life by the time this building is used.
Yeah, exactly.
Because Windows, here's the big thing if no one knows, Windows ten goes away October of twenty twenty-five.
Right.
Meaning that there's no more security updates, there's no more protections, it's gone. So buying into it and having equipment that's probably only Windows ten compatible. Means that then you get to buy another new widget October of next year, which I don't think any of us want to go through.
Okay.
Wait, I have a, but on the access control quote.
Yes.
Does that include anything for the doors here at this building?
No, it includes the four, for that building. He's going to give us a secondary quote. Once he heard back from Twin City Hardware, so he get this quote done on this building. Because that's separate. So I'll make a motion to approve quotation two-two zero one one and two-two zero one zero. With um the caveat of two things. That he change out the wall mount depth cabinet. And that we will try to supply a double sized one and one listed. And that we feel that the unify Wi-Fi six pro is not the standard and we would like to have a seven.
Correct.
And that the check we wrote for this, we will void and write a new check. For fifty percent of one sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
A second, thank you, because that's the total of these two quotes. Is there any other discussion on that? And then I'll get to the other part. All those in favor say, oh, 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 oh.
My only suggestion would be recommending scheduling a teams meeting with Tim.
Yep.
Everybody who wants to be involved in this system, not who, all concerns that Justin has.
Okay.
Before we.
Get too much further.
Go any further.
Okay.
Agreed through a payment.
Yeah.
Sure that the equipment that's being provided for the new town hall. Will all work together.
Yep.
And will last longer than October of next year.
Right, and that's, that's on this quote more than anything. That's on this sec- second quote that I didn't approve. So this is for the first two, and we're just paying him half down, so I'm comfortable with doing that right now. And then schedule his team meetings on this piece of paper and say, this is a problem we need to work through.
What is the sense of urgency on any of this? If we waited just to do it, clear it up all and just do it all, what's the difference in one month?
Because part of it is he's already ordering equipment for us. And ordering wiring. I know, he's already started ordering. He's asked us for fifty percent down. Just like any of the other vendors have asked us for that. And I don't have any problem paying him on these first two quotes. But I, I definitely withhold on this one until he comes back with something different.
If if he can, are we having a meeting next Thursday?
Yes. At nine.
At nine. If.
Not eight.
Okay, that might make it more unique, but um, I mean, if that's, if he can attend to answer that. I just don't want us to buy something that goes out of style, out of date.
I completely.
And that's this one here.
Yes, that's the one that actually looks completely different.
Yeah, this eleven zero zero eight. So I'm not approving that. I'm just approving these two.
Sure.
So.
The. I first want to thank you for your intelligence on this whole thing. I do. And the other thing that really is exposed here is what do we got this guy for if he's selling us old shit?
I'm not sure what he, where he's, if he did this as a placeholder only to in prove it down the road, I'm not sure, and we'll ask him that. So on these two that I just quoted you and made the motion on, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed.
Opposed.
And that motion carried. And then on this one, I'll hold this and I will ask him if he can get on Teams next week on the Thursday meeting.
Perfect.
And then if you can get on Teams, we'll set it up and.
Yep. Or if if there's another time, I will make it work, but I just.
We'll see what we can do to bring that all together.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Little bit much, but it just works to get it all through at once.
Yeah. I know.
Oh.
Yes.
You know how embarrassing it would be? These are potatoes hanging here. This sounds security.
Yeah, that's the, that's the only part I, well then. And actually, uh, the fire chief brought in probably the the best company that does security systems, which was Genetek. Problem is, is Genetek knows how to charge.
Yeah.
They definitely know how to 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 write the.
They got the good shit.
Well, I'll just say Bosch is a preferred provider with them for a very good reason.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, I'm going to move on and not do F right now. We're going to go to the pay request for the well installation. And I'll just let him tell you that the, it's a little bit higher than the bid, but go ahead.
All right. So we get uh invoice from Tim Buckfield for.
Right here, it's in your package. Go ahead.
Okay. And the, the number is uh slightly higher by. Actually, or just so we read. So the, the original bid uh based on bid form, which is based on unit pricing. Was a hundred fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. So the pay application is a hundred sixty thousand ninety. And the reasons for that is on the bid form, the small well. Was set at two hundred fifty, we will piece the dome. That was based on information that Mark Janovic and Gerald Pishman from our office had gathered from similar sized wells.
Yeah.
Around the area and and was a placeholder. And that all, the five inch well was drilled two hundred eighty feet.
Yep.
Additional thirty millimeter drilling. And the casing went from a hundred fifty feet to two hundred sixty. So those two prices increased. Similarly, with the eight inch well, um, we'd set a depth of one hundred twenty-five feet, which was based on the well that was drilled here. Um, and that well, the actual depth of that well was real with three hundred eighty-five. Additional sixty millimeter drilling. Then we also have a cost reduction, the amount of proing that had to be done was. Fifteen units less than we what was included on it. So there's a slight credit back for that, but because both wells. Like the deeper than what.
Yeah.
The number was.
Number.
Bit formally.
Yeah. So um, anyone have any questions for him? It's done. He's supplied, I think, almost all the documents that you need.
Yep, he's supposed to be dropping a couple of slides with the uh well, televised.
Okay, so you're still waiting on that?
Yep, so basically the recommendation would be approving.
Yeah.
With the check being held until Terry receives the order.
I'll make a motion to approve one hundred sixty thousand and ninety dollars to be paid to Butterfield. Drilling and irrigation with Terry holding the check. Until she and Bruce are comfortable that all the documentation has been submitted.
Second, I have a quick question.
Yes.
The, I'm just looking at the spreadsheet.
The spreadsheet's wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, she just.
Because I was like, he said it was three thousand, yet I'm looking at here and it looks like it's about seven hundred dollars.
Because that was the higher of the two quotes and we took this lower of the two, so we put the wrong one in.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed and that passes. Who seconded that?
Aye.
He did. Thank you. I don't have a pay request on the sanitary system install. He did not submit anything to us. I put it on here because I wasn't sure and because we posted a week out, I'm like, oh, I'll just put it on. Um, he's pretty much done. It looks like he's got a little um grade work to do out there, but other, you know, round it. But it looked good to me today when I was out there looking at it, so I think he's pretty much finished.
I'm surprised because that would probably be the only thing that showed up on time. This is bill.
Yeah. You didn't say that aloud enough, so hopefully no one heard that.
I, I think as long as it's in the record, I'm good.
Um, anything on the generator tracker? Oh, this is the tracker quote that we have. That's in our drive. Oh my goodness, I gotta look. So we asked for that tracker quote to be put in here so we could approve it on this generation, generator. It's for thirteen fifty. That puts that tracking on so that Zach and Terry and I get those notifications that she's powering up and then she's powering down. So we don't have to physically go out there and power up and power down every Monday. Um, everybody comfortable with that? I'll make a motion to approve the ally generator quote. One zero four six six for thirteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Second, I have a quick question on it.
Yes.
Um, the twelve months doesn't start until we actually get the generator, right?
Yeah, yeah.
True, okay.
It's on order, but it hasn't come yet.
Well, I think there was. Yeah, I was gonna say there was quite a lead time. I was like, I don't want four months of our twelve month subscription to pay out before we have it.
All of them famous say aye. Opposed, it passes. And then back to F. So you've got a couple of things on your table. You have this Berghammer piece of paper that states ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Um, this is not a change order. This is just quoting us prices on this and I'm going to have Bruce speak to it.
Yes, so this will be uh, we should have pulled the request that included adding uh techy pad for the generator. And that's included in this ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. The total cost for the pad is. Just under twenty-six hundred dollars. This also includes bringing the natural gas from the building to the generator pad. The our uh natural gas generator and that cost was thirty-two oh six. And then the final piece on this was adding some additional rock mulch and edging. To kind of encompass all the concrete pads in the back area. And I've been going back and forth with Ron uh to get his landscaper to get the numbers to reflect. The actual amounts that we asked them to add.
So this is too high.
So the numbers you are. And so, once I get the number that I agree with. Then I will uh include this uh for approval at the next month's uh town board meeting as a change.
Is everybody comfortable with this?
I did have the one question of running the gas piping from where Midwest dropped it to where the generator is. Is thirty-two hundred and six dollars?
Yeah.
How many feet is it? I was gonna say it must be the most golden pipe ever laid.
It is gold, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll hold you to it.
Yeah.
Well, and and part of that isn't just the pipe, they also have a. Two PSI gas line regulator that has to be provided with that. Again, it's, it's a big expense for a very short piece of pipe with regulator.
Well, I, I know what a regulator costs too. That's why I like, there's this, this is a very expensive version of per foot plus a.
There are, of course, I'm cheap. So I did have something on furnishings. I did not get to that. What else did you have? Fire hall yet.
Did you need a motion for this?
We don't need a motion. You're just, it's, we're all comfortable with this and he gets the quantities. He'll get the quantities in order.
Warning everybody that there will be a change order coming at the next number meeting. Number, and as soon as I get a number that I feel is reasonable, I'll distribute that to everybody so you've got that information. Um, one of the other things that will be included in the next change order. Again, I just want to make sure that everybody understands what's going on next.
Okay, I'm going to go through it pretty quick for the board. This tile will be on the floor of the restrooms and this will be on the wall. The wall tile will be behind all the fixtures and on the side of the handicap stall. So if you think of the restroom you have in here, this would go behind the sinks and toilets and then on the one back wall of the restroom. This will be the stalls. So that's what the ladies in the office and myself with the help somebody picked out. So that's that.
It's a beautiful model.
I'm happy to have a bathroom here.
Over there on the go. Over at the building, we know we have a recessed mat. That goes in the building as you come in the door to take care of all the stuff around your feet. This will be the tile. And this will be the mat, this little square. It's a little warmer color than this blue gray. So that's, the two entrance areas will have this and then that mat. So that's where we are on that. Well, that's a couple more things. Then in the. In the building, in the office area at the window, there's going to be a bookshelf that goes around in that corner. And there will be a cut. Cover top that covers that bookshelf and goes to the exterior. Like this one does where people will come up to the counter and, and they'll be waiting on. This will be the bookshelf. Hey, this will be the counter. That is what we've chosen. Pretty nondescript because it goes with the floor and with the.
I'm just glad it's not beige.
And then the final. The cabinets in the kitchen will be these. They're pretty utilitarian, plain paint, and this will leave a solid surface on it. I don't know if I have black handles or no, they probably haven't decided that this is where we're at. So this involves all of the hard surfaces that are in the town hall. And I brought it to you tonight because the contractor needs to start placing orders, especially for those. Bathroom stalls, they have some lead time on them. And so we thought it would be best if we brought them all to you and you could just approve those finishes I showed you, or if you had any better ideas. I'm open, but we haven't decided any paint colors except for a white paint in the store room. Otherwise, we really haven't gotten down to that. We need ready and we will come back to you with that.
Do we have a color on the uh new voting?
Oh, yes, we do. We're kind of thinking one of these two.
You're gonna ask my opinion. You have to go with the one in the middle so you don't suck the light out of the room. I second.
Got there because, because we are asking for. The doors to get a ignore sample because these are hard to come by. And so the doors will go with this. That's where we haven't decided. So I'll be waiting for door samples to go with this and then we'll know where we're going. So those colors are still.
Okay.
What color on the exterior door?
Right here.
Oh, not.
Not glass?
All the glass through the bit.
Beautiful.
All the way through this. Right? And on the exterior exit doors on the building will be painted the same color as the side. And on the exterior exit doors on the building will be painted the same color as the side. So you really won't see them because they're not even an option. It's a job. Like the office in the office.
Do they have a siding color?
Yes, we do. It's already been ordered. I don't know what I have in here. And then, oh, I want you. There it is. You approved that last one. So there's where we're at. But I'll take a motion from someone if you want to approve those finishes that show on.
I make a motion to approve the finishes as we saw.
Second, almost in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed and that passes. And then before we get to this spreadsheet. Um, on our agenda for the fire department, we have on there the build out for the storage hall. This piece of paper that you have. Is what was submitted to us by Berghammer. For that build out. We can add it on to their project. Is it as a change order? Is that what it's called? Okay, as a change order. And we can approve this tonight as a change order so they can start as soon as possible. But this gives Zach the entire build out that he is looking for. And he's going to make a minor adjustment to it, but otherwise this is where he's going with it.
How much is the minor adjustment?
Oh, the R is very long.
Which would probably be a little bit less money. So here. Yeah.
The drawing that we did was basically replicated where the existing wall is back where the pressure tank.
Yep.
And, and are sitting in a corner here.
Yeah.
That indicated, uh, believes that the pressure tank can actually be pushed north. So the pressure wall can just continue straight through. We'll continue with the, the debt will still be the same size. It's going to can weber over. Um, all the way across it will, it'll help to simplify it some.
Is everyone happy with this?
Yeah.
I'll get two no's from that two contractors.
No, we're moving on. So do you need a motion?
To approve this quote that will become a change order, but we can approve it now. To, um, for this and then we'll go, then they can start.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote we received from Berghammer Builders on November twelfth for the. Saint Joe's Fire Station improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
We're coming next Thursday.
Opposed. That passes. So you've got a new spreadsheet. So I needed to ask the board how they want to handle this because. This is the project for the new town hall. So we did not put this price in here for. The build out in the fire hall. And so. I'm asking you this, do you want us to start down here with a new? Line item that would show you anything we're spending in this project in the fire hall. We have, we have room in the budget for it, so it's not like we don't have room in it. How do you want me to show this on here? Cause I'm just up, I'm like. Terry and I had one of those days today and we're just like, you know, we'll just talk about tonight.
I, I would prefer it all stay on one sheet of paper.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Cause the change order is coming underneath the project. So to me, it's just added work.
Okay, we'll do that.
Dan, do you have a?
No, I think you should make different category of fire hall expenditures and then have different line items as they show up. I mean.
Okay.
So don't just think of one bulk, but see the individual line item.
We can do that.
For fire hall expenditures.
Anyone else have any questions on this? Um, we will change the amount being paid to, um, Sunny Link from what we agreed to tonight. But besides that, any other questions on this spreadsheet? She shows you at the very bottom here that we have almost a hundred thousand in interest on this loan money that we've. Um, earned. So our. Estimate up above at a hundred and seventy is not far off. By the time we get to all the money.
And I'm hoping that we hear back from Dairyland Power before the end of the year.
Yeah.
Cause that'd be nice to at least understand where they come from.
Anything else on this? Are you okay?
I'm good.
All right, we'll move on. Thank you, Bruce. I think you're done.
Run. Before I think of more questions.
Yeah. I appreciate you coming tonight after this morning. Yes, sir.
I forgot one thing.
Come on, Zach. Okay.
Zach, you're starting to turn into me. It's not like.
So I got a hold of plumber finally.
Oh, yes.
Second week at September, he's gonna come and work on the plumbing fix.
Uh, okay.
We're gonna like pull one of our trucks like we talked this morning. We'll pull one of our trucks out so you can work in the bay for a couple of days. Uh, I've also had, uh, country back come and do a couple hours of color heating on, uh, on units. And. They have one of them completely fine. Fine as the sensors, so like the maintenance works. Um, the other one they're still working on, they have possibly a purchase that they gotta fix, but it. Based, based on what I, what I was learning from them is these things probably have not worked for. Many years.
Yeah.
And we're gonna probably put a little bit of money into them. It's like a thousand dollar, uh, game of sensors and into more of a computerized sensor.
Sure.
Uh, but it sounds like we're gonna be able to use them.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, on to public works. Pay request. On road maintenance. I know we just got it.
This one?
Oh, he's got it on there.
The one underneath it. It's allied underneath it.
Oh, you've got them on both here. So Allied has sent us a pay request for the rest of their work. For seventy seven thousand five seventeen fifty eight. Do you want to say anything to that?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, as mentioned, the final payment of seventy seven thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and fifty eight cents. Uh, will complete the contract for. Uh, this year's twenty twenty four road maintenance project. The original contract amount was four hundred and twenty nine thousand two hundred and forty eight dollars and fifty cents. The final construction amount is four hundred and twenty eight thousand five hundred and seven dollars and eighty one cents.
Wow.
Um, and that, that included, if the board may recall, that at the end of the initial part of the project, there was some money left over and we went ahead and did more crack sealing and patching. So the, uh, all of the documentation that is necessary to close the project out, uh, including the consent of surety and lien waivers. Uh, have been submitted. And therefore we're just looking for the board to go ahead and. Close this out and pay the final payment.
Anyone have any questions for him? I got it in front of me, so I make a motion to, um. Oh, let me get this up. Do pay request number three final. To Allied Blacktop Company for the amount of seventy seven thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and fifty eight cents.
Second.
Any other discussion? All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed and it passes. Um. I think we're done with you, Lee. Thank you very much.
You.
Thanks.
We appreciate it. I don't have anything on Parks and Trails except to announce that the DNR is coming here tomorrow at nine AM. To speak to the people on, that join the preserve. About how they arrived at their decision. I posted it as a quorum only for ourselves and the parks department, Parks Committee, so there won't be any decisions made. So. Just so you're all aware, that just came up pretty quick. Um, onto the pine commission. I don't know that I have anything else on junkyards or chronic nuisances besides the ones that are in the closed session. That continue to. Be in our. Um, we had excitement around here though. Today we had the FBI and the BCA and yes. Yeah, we had a big raid.
Saint Joe. Yeah, we're, the only one who wasn't here was our lawyer. It was weird.
I, we should have called him, right? We all sat with our noses on the windows watching.
What did they raid?
They raided somewhere in Holton.
Oh.
So there was ten FBI, maybe ten, twelve and a few.
Local Miami Vice thing.
Yeah, and the bomb squad and the sheriff. So it was quite a busy place. When we came in for eight o'clock meeting, I was like, who are these people in these black pickups with? Blacked out windows. And I fall in with my black pickup. I fit right in, right? No, not really. And then they just keep coming. And then there's a suburban with blacked out windows and. The bomb squad's trucks show up and. I, I was laughing because the guys over here working on this building, I'm sure, looking over here going, what in the hell?
They were all worried about their current warrants. I was gonna say, just remember, we're preserving the rural feel of the town of Saint Joe.
Okay. Dan Ton's up, so we have two. Two ordinances in front of us tonight. We have the chapter sixty eight event. And event plan ordinance. And also one thirty, the mobile home. And home, mobile home parks. So the event and event plans, which is in your, um. Um. Drive. Changed assemblies to event. I think that's the biggest. Go ahead. You can talk. I've talked enough tonight.
We tried, we tried to clean up the assembly ordinance quite a bit, um. Including being consistent on our terminology between events versus assemblies. Yeah. Generally trying, generally trying to. It had been through some changes a few years ago with small versus large.
Yeah.
That left it. But.
Yeah.
So I think that one's moved like that.
And you also added that cleanup.
Yeah. Requirement to clean up.
Yeah.
That timeframe for that.
Yeah. Anyone have any questions for Anton on this ordinance? Um, Nick, you reviewed it. Did you see any problems?
No, it's great.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty. Two zero two four dash eighteen, chapter sixty eight, events and event plans.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. You just know I was gonna say that. So, oh geez, get ready.
Uh, Justin Cruz.
Aye.
Dan Gavin.
Aye.
Teresa Johnson.
Hi.
Chris Marshall.
Aye.
Matt Moore.
Aye.
Motion carried. So then the second one we have on here is the mobile homes and mobile home parks. So we had to take out, it looks like St. Ray's County zoning had to come out of that. And we also changed the heading. Or the first sentence under camper and camper parking spaces because our mobile home park has the ability to have campers there. But we said within the mobile home park are as follows, so that is clear. That we're not allowing camping taking place elsewhere. Cause we already have a campground that's running illegally. So you know what the heck, right? Anyone have any questions for Anton on this one? I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash nineteen, chapter one thirty, mobile homes and mobile home parks.
Okay, second. We'll call vote again.
Matt Moore.
Aye.
Dan Gavin.
Aye.
Chris Marshall.
Aye.
Teresa Johnson.
Aye.
Justin Cruz.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. So then we have a new member for the fire department and you've done the background check on him. He was over there on the clipboard, right? Yeah. So anyone want to make a motion for Matthew Jacobs?
I'll make a motion to approve Matthew Jacobs as a new member of the Saint Joe Fire Department.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed and it passes. And then on to the operator license.
I'll make a motion to approve Dylan Ninas at Bass Lake Cheese Factory for an operator license.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, it passes. And then the town board minutes would be from October tenth. Or something more than October. Wait, what do we have? October tenth and the eighth?
The tenth and the twenty fourth.
So the eighth, the tenth and the twenty fourth were in your drive. It just isn't listed just as October on the, on the board meeting.
Make a motion to approve the town board minutes from October eighth, October tenth and October twenty fourth.
Uh, second. I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed and that passes. And then budget invoices, checks and bank balances. I just wanted you to be aware that you have this letter on your table. We get this periodically from Lers and it has our loans on the back and it's telling you that this time there's no indication that we should be. Um, refinancing. But they do track that for us. So if the time comes that they're gonna tell us, yes, I will invite them to a board meeting. And we will be able to talk to them.
That one point four nine is looking.
Don't, don't you like that one point four nine?
That almost didn't happen, so don't knock.
I know. That one is the big one. Yeah. One of the big ones. Yeah. I mean, they're all big, but yeah.
That was the fire truck.
Yeah, that was the fire truck. You have budget. Um, budget and loss and account listings for all of our bank accounts. Um, our bank. Uh, account doesn't have. The rest of the money is transferred from the loan in there yet. The general fund covered some of our bills for the building today. Because she doesn't get the money till tomorrow, Monday. So when she gets it, she'll reimburse the general fund for that. So we'll transfer over. So I'll make a motion to approve check numbers two, five, four, three, five. Through two, four, two, five, four, five, one, including all transfers and e-pays for this month.
Second with a caveat to Sunny Links posted.
Yep, will change.
Okay. I didn't know if we had to call it out here as well.
Well, I should call it out. I'll say that we will, um, void that check and reissue the new one.
Second.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Otherwise I will take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that passes.
Did we need anything on public records requests?
Oh, I forgot. What do you want to say on public records requests?
Make sure to unmute.
I've only had one request for recordings. It's been pretty quiet.
Fantastic.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
So if you looked in your drive, there was a variety of, um, before, I guess we go into closed session first and then I can.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, perigene.
There's a sec, uh, second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Uh, Teresa Johnson.
Yes.
Matt Moore.
Aye.
Justin Cruz.
Aye.
Chris Marshall.
Aye.
Dan Gavin.
So we are in closed session. Let me turn this. Thing off. I'm gonna close the meeting. I'm gonna end it.